Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 14th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we'll conduct a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence they'd like to offer? I do. I'd like to offer a moment of silence to Nancy Carol Carter of Lucerne. She passed on May 21st after many years of being Carter Strong while fighting cancer. Her family is located here and all over the United States. She's survived by her children Jennifer and Jason Voss of Aurora, Colorado, Jessica and Chris Bird of Lucerne, and Jason Valerie Ferguson of Logat, North Carolina. Grandchildren Natalie, Joey Bailey, Harmony, Connor, Carter, Seth, and Caleb. She'll be greatly missed, and we offer her family prayers and healing for strength. Peter, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And happy 247th birthday to the United States Army, by the way.
Happy Flag Day.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I always forget it, right? So, item four, consideration of items not appearing on the agenda. Are there any at this time that anybody would like to bring forward? No? Okay. Consent agenda. The consent agenda is usually non-controversial items that are brought forward. We usually pass them in one motion. If someone would like to pull one, we can go ahead and do so.
I'm pulling 5.13.
Okay, let me check with the board first if they're going to pull any. Is anyone from the board pulling any? No? Okay, and you said which number, if you can come up for the record and...
5.13 to drought emergency, and I have a letter to read about.
Okay.
Let me offer that for the public to hear, that the public is requesting to pull item 5.13.
Okay, thank you. 5.13. Are there any others? Is there anybody in the Zoom room? No, I don't see any. All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.12 and 5.14 through 5.17.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And as it is 9:04, I guess we could take up the... How long would the 5.13 take? We'll just go ahead and do it.
Good choice. Good choice.
If you could read the title, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and so the title is... Sorry, let me read it. Thank you. Vice Chair. Approve continuation of an emergency declaration for drought conditions. And Joan Moss, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Thank you. My letter is to Eric Porter. My name is Joan Moss, and I am here writing you my comments and questions regarding the use permit application regarding Mambacho Mountain Organics located in...
That's not... The 5.13 has to do with...
How can Lake County consider more projects that use water?
Joan, this is about emergency declaration for drought.
This is what I'm reading about. I'm mentioning the drought here. This is a thing about the drought.
Go ahead.
Neighbors at both ends of Wildcat Road have run out of water in the last years. How can Lake County rethink approving bigger projects that used up valuable resources that are already running short? How can Lake County consider more projects that use water when the same county has declared an emergency declaration because of the drought? I live at Wildcat... I live on Wildcat Road. The use of water for this project will increase, and I am objecting to it on the basis of the drought emergency that you, your county, has declared. I will write more at a later time. I thank Andrew Amelin Connevis, program manager, who met with me today. I will study the papers sent to me and learn more, but I strongly believe Lake County needs to rethink approving projects that use up more valuable resources that are already running short. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else from the public or that has a comment? With such, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the continuation of emergency declaration for drought conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And so, thank you for that. And it's a nice... So, 6.1, Lake County Animal Care and Control. We have our pet of the week. All right.
I don't think you could see your money's on the floor. Hi, I'm Jenna. I'm an animal control officer. I've been with animal control since 2018, and today we have Rocky. He's a six-year-old neutered male Chihuahua dog. We keep him in kennel 18. Rocky used to live with a larger breed female dog, so if you're thinking he's not going to be good with two big dogs or one big dog, he is experienced, Rocky. We can let you see Rocky Monday through Friday from 11 to 4:00, and Saturday from 11 to 3:00. You can find us at 4949 Helbus Drive in Lakeport, or give us a call at 707-263-0278. What do you think, Rocky? You want to get adopted?
I was hoping he'd bark right into it.
He's just got the sweetest, cheeriest disposition when you walk by that kennel. He's so happy to see you. He just is really the sweetest little thing, and he's got a big personality for a little dog. Huh? You're doing good for a little guy. Any questions for us? No? You want to walk around and say hi? You...
I love his leash.
We thought it was appropriate.
He looks so timid. He's like, what am I doing here?
Oh, he picks somebody.
Oh, he likes Peter.
You win, Peter.
He's starting to liven up.
You're silly. You're silly. See what I mean?
There it is.
It is a sweet little nugget. Okay. Tell everybody to have a good day.
Thank you, Rocky. Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move on to our 6.2, public input. At this time, if you have something to discuss that's not on the current agenda, you can come up to the microphone or unmute on Zoom for three minutes, state your name for the record, and state your purpose. And I'm not seeing anybody. Actually, we do have somebody online.
And then I do have a letter I was requested to read.
Okay. If you could...
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Linda Hatfield. Over the past four weeks, I have listed complaints against any positive change. I felt compelled to also speak up. Since November of 2021, I volunteered at the Lucerne Outreach Program. It happens only once a week for at most three and a half hours. Over the course of my time as a volunteer, I've observed and aided the staff in caring for the people who use drugs in the surrounding community and their health needs. I have been present when certain Lucerne residents have stopped by the truck angrily demanding that Anita abandon her outreach. Each time, she's answered questions in a professional manner, explaining that treating these marginalized community members benefits the whole community. I was present when a man who lived on 13th threatened her. However, he gracefully shielded the client he was trying to intimidate and continued on with her mission. This outreach deals with drug user help and referral from a harm reduction model. Harm reduction is fundamentally grounded in principles that aim to protect human rights and improve public health. It means treating people who use drugs with compassion and dignity while also respecting their personal autonomy. Prominently displayed and discussed with clients are risks and treatments if they want them. Since the moratorium on glassware, there has been no glassware to spin. I can testify to this as I help document client services. Referral for services is always available and help accessing services is offered. I don't find the staff rude. I do find them direct and passionate. I have never seen them be adversarial unless you mean standing up for what they do and refusing to leave. They do wave a lot, but have never used vulgar hand gestures. What better place to have an outreach like this than near a building offering substance use counseling? It is only three and a half hours one time a week. Please choose to support and not stigmatize and discriminate against people who use drugs. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
This letter is in regards to any positive change, Lucerne. This is from Michael Hatfield. I've been listening in the recent comments from the small group of Lucerne residents objecting to the outreach on Tuesday nights. Some of the opinions offered seem to have misrepresented details and admitted facts. Mr., I can't pronounce his name properly, Boncelini, has actually approached the outreach twice. On both occasions, he walked up and shouting that we had to leave, that we couldn't be on the public street. He used vulgar and derogatory hate speech in reference to the outreach staff and the program participants. He engaged staff and participants in an intimidating manner, including videotaping participants up close while they tried to access public health services at a syringe service program. This visit resulted in Anita and another staff member and volunteers placing themselves as a shield to protect the participants from their aggression. He even verbalized to them that he would bash their faces in. Having witnessed this vile discrimination and stigmatization, I chose to become a weekly volunteer. I have not missed a week since. The staff of any positive change has always engaged any community member who wanted to ask questions. They explained who they serve, what they offer, and why. Many in the community do not agree with the basics of harm reduction, which are supporting the autonomy of people who use drugs with dignity and respect. The track and support SUV when parked side by side do not extend out into the road past the lines detailing a marked parking space. The cones are placed to keep participants within the outreach area. The outreach is, in addition to syringe services, providing health referral services, substance use counseling, and treatment referrals, naloxone training and kits, hygiene kits, wound care kits, safe sex kits, feminine products, kits, snack bags, and staples, coats, sleeping bags, and more. What it does not provide is glassware. I know this because I actually have been helping inside the truck. Now, mind you, syringe and other drug users' health supplies are never outside the truck. I have never witnessed any staff or volunteers be rude or... rude. I have witnessed harm reduction at work, standing firm on the convictions that people who use drugs are marginalized community who deserve to receive help. I believe so strongly in this program that I chose to volunteer my time. It has been in my experience that 90% of more of the participants actually live in Lucerne and need their community members to respect and help them. I fully support any positive change remaining at their current location for one day a week, three hours. Thank you, Michael Hatfield.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? I'm not seeing any hands up, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.3, our 9:08 Presentation of Proclamation Commending Peter Windrum and Consideration of Request for Applications to Be Collected to Fill Vacancy on the Middle Creek Project Committee. And Supervisor Sabate will be reading this, and I'll be coming up.
So, our last meeting last Monday for the Middle Creek Restoration Committee was the last meeting for Peter Windrum. As soon as we were done with that meeting, we approached each other and had a discussion and thought that this would be the right way to say thank you and goodbye to Peter, not goodbye, but goodbye from the Middle Creek Restoration Committee. I'll say more after. Let me read this. Oh, man, I typed a lot. Proclamation commending Peter Windrum for his relentless passion of pursuing environmental justice for Lake County, its residents, and its wildlife. Whereas in the 1970s, Peter Windrum served on committees guiding mitigation and best practices for geothermal development in the Cobb watershed, joining Forrest Brumfield and Roberta Lyons, among others, on steering and oversight committees. And whereas in the 1980s, Peter Windrum addressed groups of people in an effort to enhance public understanding of... I'm going to say this wrong. The Gopsevics? Gopsevic? And Solano Decrees during periods of extensive flooding urging that a balance be found between property rights and environmental concerns. And whereas in the 1990s, Peter Windrum was instrumental in the first substantial action by the Lake County Land Trust in acquiring the property for establishing the Rodman Preserve, persevering through the difficult issues of water rights and water usage centered on Rodman Slough. And whereas in the 2000s, Peter Windrum supported the watershed protection district, becoming a non-federal sponsor of the Middle Creek Restoration Project. And whereas during the same time period, Peter Windrum, along with others, helped create the Sierra Club Lake Group, urging the group to begin monitoring hitch migration, which led to the formation of the Chai Council, a group who discusses actions on behalf of the threatened hitch and the water around it. And whereas by 2014, the hitch, with the efforts of the Chai Council and others, was listed by the State of California as a threatened species. And whereas in 2016, Peter Windrum, believing that the Middle Creek Project was a big part of the solution for the hitch, convened the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition, a clearinghouse group created for building public support to push the project forward. And whereas in 2017, the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition cooperated with the county and following Peter Windrum's suggestion to bring Assembly Member Cecilia Aguirre Curry to view the site of the project in hopes it would garner her support for grant funding that had been requested from the California Department of Water Resources. And whereas in 2018, the grant of $15 million was approved to move the Middle Creek Restoration Project forward, as well as create the Blue Ribbon Committee. And whereas in 2019, Peter Windrum, along with Dr. Harry Lyons, presented the state of the Middle Creek Project, which inspired the birth of the Middle Creek Project Committee, a standing committee that follows and ensures that progress on the project is being made. And whereas throughout the time that Peter Windrum has been on the Middle Creek Project Committee, he has pushed to ensure compliance with the Department of Water Resources contract while sharing his ethical concerns on both the just management of Bloody Island and the long-term environmental impact to the water quality of Clear Lake and the increased chances of survival for the hitch. And whereas Peter Windrum works to bring people together in person, on site, to discuss all aspects of a project, his effectiveness stems from his knowledge of law and his pride in growing up here. He has the guts to respectfully and forcefully disagree with colleagues and then work to compromise. Whereas Peter Windrum has had a long history in understanding our environment, protecting our environment, and working to better our environment through various groups, committees, and agencies throughout Lake County and beyond. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake recognizes the vast contributions of Peter Windrum and share their unconditional gratitude to the great and often selfless service that he has provided to his community over the course of many decades, passed and adopted this 14th day of June, 2022. And so, before I pass it on, I just want to say literally that the committee for Middle Creek would not exist if it wasn't for the inspiration of Peter Windrum. Not going to forget Dr. Lyons as well. Kind of a team that comes together for this project. Peter's passion shows through and through. He will disagree forcefully with you, but there's reasons why, because he wants to see the results that he knows we should be aiming for. And to be honest, most of the time, he's very correct on what the results should be and what we should be doing. So I really appreciate the time that I've been able to get to know you, become a friend, and the work that you've done to help propel Lake County into a better place where we can accomplish the goal of the Middle Creek Restoration Project. The list, I'm sure, lacks a whole lot of other things. I do want to thank Dr. Lyons for providing such a laundry list of things that has been accomplished. I've only known you a short time, not since the 70s. Wasn't quite born yet at that time. But do appreciate the understanding of how much you have contributed, more so than just what I've experienced in my own time. So if you would like to say a word, or if anybody else would like to say a word, the microphone is open.
Thank you very much. I'm hugely honored by this proclamation. It touches me deeply. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. As you all know, and all of us know, that none of these things are achieved without the assistance of just key people. And I do want to take a moment to recognize just a few. Principally, the steering committee for the Middle Creek Coalition is made up of exceptional people, and I just want to acknowledge that. Victoria Brandon... Victoria Brandon is the chair of the local chapter of the Sierra Club, but recognized serving on national committees. But what Victoria did also for the Chai Council, which was formed in 2004, is serve as a secretary. And she and I worked together and held that position, and you can't imagine how much work that was. It was accounting and compiling thousands of sightings that were recorded, of maintaining websites and minutes and all those things, and she has been tireless in that regard and appreciate it. And she and I have agreed that at this time, so much of what the Chai Council has done over the years has been taken over by others, and the Chai Council has served its useful life, if you will. And so she and I are both retiring from that position, and that data is... that has been compiled with hundreds of volunteers and thousands, is vested with the Clear Lake Environmental Resource Center. Anyway, just that. So Victoria, Dr. Lyons, a dear, dear friend for 40 years, working together on various projects. The president... I don't know if it's titled as president or chair of the Resource Conservation District. Just an exceptional friend. We enjoy his music, as anybody has heard him. And his humor is fabulous. Fabulous. New Jersey. Anyway. And Val Nixon, currently the president of the Lake County Land Trust, just in a remarkable talent and gets to the heart of things, and she, more than anyone else, was responsible for getting Cecilia to contact her about supporting the project. Mary Jo Velazquez, newer to the community, a scientist, first and foremost, a scientist. So it better be grounded in the facts. It's sort of like Sergeant Freidy, just the facts, ma'am. And that's Mary Jo. Mary Jo. And so, anyway, it's been a marvelous experience for me. I do want, of course, to acknowledge my family, my beloved spouse of 50 years, Kathy, and my daughter Jessica, my grandson Carson, my son Matt, who I believe is watching from elsewhere, and my other grandchildren. And by the way, it's not easy to be married to a guy who is passionate about a strange fish when there's no... It has its challenges from time to time. I also wish to acknowledge Roberta Lyons. Roberta is the moving force behind the Lake County Land Trust, and from its very inception and has... The Land Trust, as you know from that proclamation, I've worked with on a number of projects over the years. And anyway, thanks to those people and so many more. And thank you especially, you gentlemen, for picking up and taking on the responsibilities for the Middle Creek Project and to all of the supervisors for doing so. The benefits will be enormous to Lake County, to the Clear Lake, as we all know. And it's a huge undertaking. I had hoped to be in this position until it was actually completed, but things can't... You don't control everything. Anyway, thank you very, very much. I'm very honored and appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter. I just, you know, want to wish you the best on whatever your endeavors are. I know I'll be working with you on a couple other things, but at the same time, that strange fish was a staple food at one time and still is for a lot of habitat, you know, regardless. So thank you for standing up for, you know, for that endangered species and for the work you, you know, helped influence us to stay on task with, you know. And so I'll just keep it short and sweet and say that.
If I may just add one thing. One of the biggest reasons about my interest in the hitch is because I grew up, as generations of my family has, on Clear Lake, on Kelsey Creek, playing with hitch. And every time I go down there with our grandchildren who do that today, I think of those children. I just think of those children going back decades, back centuries, playing in Kelsey Creek and the other creeks, chasing the hitch in the springtime because it's such a great game. And those little, you know, those little kids under the watchful eyes of their mothers having that experience. And so it goes so much further beyond just us, beyond that. So, thank you. I don't know. Would you miss anything?
I just want to thank you again, Peter, for all the guidance, expertise, and just being a wealth of knowledge. Ever since I joined the county, I know I could always lean on Peter, whether it be about the hitch, groundwater, Middle Creek, all sorts of things. You've always been someone I can go to, so thank you. And like I said, you can't get rid of me that easily. I have your number. But I wish you the best, so thank you.
And Peter, I'll just conclude here. I got to thank you personally just a few minutes ago, and I'll publicly thank you. We wouldn't be where we are today with the project without... certainly without your guidance and bringing in the group and creating this committee. I can assure you that though you may not be participating in the meetings, your voice, your insistence will live on. It is embedded right here in my brain, and so I know that every month I've got somebody to answer to. And though you may not be sitting there, you've set the groundwork for us and challenged us to get this done, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on that item? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Thank you for that item, and we'll move on to our 6 point...
There's part B.
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, yeah, sorry. Consideration of Request for Applications to Be Collected to Fill Vacancy on Middle Creek Project Committee. And with that... And with that... Let's see. We would basically, since Peter has resigned, we would like to make the public aware with the board's approval to solicit the public for applications to be submitted so that we may appoint a new member to the committee for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. We meet, I think, next time is in August. And so hopefully, I don't see any dates here, but I do know that... I'm not sure exactly how much time we need, two weeks, three weeks, something like that.
I would say open it up until July 8th or July 15th. That gives us enough time to put it on the agenda to be able to appoint somebody for the next meeting.
Excellent. I think that's what we'll do.
Does that work with Johanna?
Johanna, will that work for you?
Okay.
All right.
And let's just go ahead and do July 15th?
Yeah.
Give it time. Okay.
Anybody from the public have, would like to comment on this? Our hearing, now I'll bring it back to the board. And do we need action or just consensus is fine, Ms. Grant?
Either one should be okay.
Okay.
Action is normally preferred, but you could do it by consensus.
Okay. If you want to do action, it's up to you.
I move to open up our application for the vacancy on the Middle Creek Project Committee with a closing date of July 15th.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And so with that, I said nine, yep, we're on it. So our public hearing, our 6.4915 Public Hearing, Consideration of Resolution Approving Applications for Community Development Block Grant Funding for Housing Assessment and Housing Development and Implementation Strategy to Micro-Enterprise Technical Assistance Program and the Business Assistance Loan Program and the Execution of a Grant Agreement and any amendments from the 2021-2022 Funding Year of the State of California Community Block Grant Program and authorize the Chair to sign. And I will give this over to CAO Parker.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, Board. On May 24th, your Board held a public meeting to consider the Community Development Block Grant allocations from the California Housing and Community Development Department. The Board was informed that Lake County was eligible for up to $1.5 million in CDBG funding. The maximum award for planning and technical assistance is $250,000. The maximum, I can't say that word, award for economic development is $750,000. After careful consideration, your Board directed staff to include the following items in the CDBG application. Planning and Technical Assistance Grant for $250,000. Micro-Enterprise Technical Assistance, $250,000. Business Assistance Loans, $500,000. The proposed resolution includes these amounts and types of programs, and if adopted today, will be submitted to the state to request grant funding. Jeff Lucas from Community Development Services should be available to answer any questions you may have, as can I.
Is Jeff on, or...? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just curious as to who will be delivering these services. I know you and I had a discussion. I believe at least one of these is going out to RFP. If you can describe who will be taking these on, which can also possibly help the public to know who to contact for these things.
Yes. So the Planning and Technical Assistance Grant for $250,000, if awarded, will put out a bid for the RFP to develop the overall comprehensive housing strategic plan. So I can't say who we would award at this time, but at least everyone will know that it'll be put out to bid. Secondly, the other two, micro enterprise and the business assistance loans, are currently being managed by CDS, and the primary contact for that is Jeff Lucas. As you may recall, we had applied for CV 1, 2, and 3 CDBG grants, and he is currently managing those awards too. And we just recently received those awards.
Okay. And so at this time, CDS is doing the Micro-Enterprise Technical Assistance Program? And then there's a different technical assistance program that's being delivered by Lake EDC?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure there's no overlap, because if there is some overlap, then at that point I would suggest we do an RFP.
Yeah. I'm sorry. And uniquely, the EDC's grant program is specifically for smaller businesses. The grant is for $2,500, whereas this business assistance loan can provide a greater amount of funding for businesses.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board?
I do have one last quick question. Do we have a report out on how these technical assistance programs and loan programs have functioned when they are completed or if a certain amount of time has gone by? Just to see how much is being accessed and the impact it's making potentially on our community?
We do not have a report yet, but I will request one and have one for possibly the next meeting, or I can just forward it to the board as a whole.
I don't have a specific timeframe, but it's also if the board approves of looking at that report and receiving that report.
Absolutely.
All right. So I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to comment on the item 6.4? Okay, I have somebody on Zoom. Betsy, you can unmute. You can, when you start, we'll give you your three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. I'd like to request that when that report is produced, that it be made available to the public as well, not just sent to the supervisors with no public review option, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolu... Or I guess I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna?
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on. Well, it looks like we...
Did we go too fast?
Yes. So let's go to ours. Let's do 7.7. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointments. Western Town Hall. It looks like we have Catherine Kate Perron Kama. And so I know she's being basically reappointed to the Western Region Town Hall. And so we just appointed two others last week for reappointment, and we'll go from there. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appoint Catherine Kate Perron Kama to the Western Region Town Hall.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. 9:30. Are we ready for, let's say?
Try the letter.
Which one?
The letter.
The letter, yeah, let's do that. We'll do 7.4. Consideration of a Letter to the Chair of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Regarding FERC Project Number 77. With that, we will give the floor to Ms. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The letter is before your Board for consideration as a possible draft to be sent to Chair Glick of FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. I think the letter speaks for itself. If your Board wishes to approve sending it, you may do so by motion, authorizing the Chair to sign and approving the letter. If you wish to make changes to it, you can certainly do that on the face of the document, and I will incorporate any adjustments you may wish to make.
Thank you, Ms. Grant, and thank you for conducting the letter as well.
And I don't see my Board memo with this, which is my fault because I don't load these myself, at least not with my stuff. But I did want to acknowledge Patrick Sullivan, who provided just a slew, a host of excellent research and background information, who made this letter possible.
All right. I think Mr. Sullivan is on. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any comments from the board? All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on item 7.4? All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I just want to make a quick comment. I really appreciate staff putting this together. This is such a difficult topic. Not, the topic itself is not difficult. The powers that are trying to change what is happening in Lake County are difficult to navigate through and get them to hear us. And I appreciate the fact that we are sending this letter to make sure that FERC hears our voice. But this is not the end.
Right. No, I appreciate the statements in the letter. Appreciate, you know, the fact that we're giving ourselves a voice to, you know, have a statement, you know, to FERC. On many occasions, there's other entities that are able to have their voice and concerns, and they're all pretty uniform because it's, for some reason or another, in my opinion, everyone that's vested into the Two Basin Solution has something to benefit from. While we, as a county, are losing something, we're still not able to be there to say, hey, we're losing this. Can we have a say in how we lose it? If that's the case, you know? So simplifying it to those terms is kind of what I'm doing. But at the same time, I always appreciate when I have both perspectives rather than just one. And so hopefully, FERC appreciates and considers this letter as well. So with that, if there's any action, I'm ready.
I'll just look at the other comment too. Obviously, no, yourself and Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Crandall are the ones that we have tasked with going to all these meetings and everything. And I just, today is confirmation of this board for Lake County just giving you all the support that you need, as you said, to hear our voice, to get it out there and make sure that we stand as one. So appreciate the work that's being done. Glad we're passing this letter today, or I hope it passes today, so.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter to the Chair of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Regarding FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And so with that, I'll just move right on to 7.5. Consideration of a Public Statement on Lake Pillsbury and the Direction to Staff to Distribute to Media Outlets. And with that, I will give the floor to CAO Parker.
Yes, Patrick Sullivan is on the Zoom to answer any of your questions.
Morning, Board. So there are a few things I wanted to highlight about this proposed statement. First, that it is an initial draft. I wanted to make sure that this is the direction the Board wants to take. I also wanted to thank Anita Grant because she was able to weigh in and help, you know, provide some guidance and which direction to take this. So I definitely appreciate her help on that. There are a few structural and typographical changes I was going to recommend when this formatting was done. So I could ultimately put up a share screen if your Board would find that helpful. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, please. If you want to go over those briefly, we can ensure that we make those changes when we move forward.
All right, just one moment. Can you see this?
Just one question. Will we have to, if we make change, we approved it as is on the other motion? Will we have to make changes?
This is a different document.
Oh, okay.
This is for the press release. The other was the letter.
All right, thank you.
You make it a little bigger.
Yeah, if you can zoom in, there we go.
We're getting there.
Yeah. The Federal Regulatory Energy Commission, I think, is just backwards there.
All right. So I have that changed. There was this word "is" here. This paragraph, there should be a "the" and a "the" there. "A" was inserted here. Other than that, there was just a small formatting change here addressing a comma. The only substantive concern that was brought to my attention was actually by the Lake Pillsbury Alliance, and that has to do with some of the numbers in this paragraph here. What I would note, they brought up, is that later feasibility studies actually identified these numbers as being potentially higher. It's just hard to put a real estimate in place because they didn't fully investigate a lot of the environmental remediation that addresses the potential harm to Lake County, the sediment removal and the vegetation management plans. They offer a host of different options. And when that later feasibility study came out, some of the options actually run a lot higher. Some of them run closer to, you know, $150,000 or $200,000 million. So this still represents a mid-range estimate. But with the information that was brought to our attention, there's the potential that the cost could actually be higher in the end. So I don't know if we want to add a line that addresses that or to revisit these numbers. I don't have anything particularly more concrete other than the range would be higher than what's expressed here.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So there was two comments that I had on this letter. One for this is, these are preliminary numbers, is maybe what we need to add to that. That, kind of like when you're repairing a house, as you start tearing down the walls, you're going to find things wrong with the skeletal framework of the house that needs to be fixed too. So something along the lines that these are preliminary numbers and that the numbers could increase drastically depending on what is found. Because the studies have not been a complete sequo study, including archaeological and biological. So my second comment is, you do a good job in the first paragraph to provide an idea of the geography of how water runs down to Marin County. And just to put it out there for the public, in the city of Nevada, they claim that they're getting 75% of their water from Sonoma County Water, who gets it directly from the Russian River. And we know that the Russian River is where the Eel River and the diversion of the water from the Eel River is dropped into the Russian River. So Lake Pillsbury is providing water that provides 75% of the water in the city of Nevada. And there's even a water district further on south, more towards the San Rafael area, that also claims they're using 75% of their water from Sonoma County Water, again, coming from the same origins. If we can get some of those percentages in there, just for them to know that water is coming in that direction. But if we can say 75% of your water, and I think "your" makes it powerful because it's going to be read by the person who actually uses that water. So those were my comments to make it a little bit more impactful for people to truly understand where their water comes from. Because we are quite the, I don't want to say the creator, but the origin of waters for a lot of different basins and a lot of different areas. I mean, our Clear Lake water goes down into Yolo County all the way, if it's not used for agricultural purposes, into the Sacramento River. The Putea Creek goes all the way through and feeds into Berriessa. The Eel River comes through, creating Lake Mendocino with the Russian River, and so on and so forth. So I think that I really want to stress that the amount of their water that is coming from these areas, that they're just happy to use water without understanding exactly where it comes from.
I do have a question on that. And this question may be directed to County Council. Just in terms of citing those percentages that Supervisor Sabatier has raised, I have seen different percentages. And would it be appropriate to cite a percentage as long as I identify the source? Like the, I believe Supervisor Sabatier was citing figures from one of those district websites. As long as I identify the source, would it be appropriate to give that figure?
Yes, Ms. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would say you can give that figure, but I would also include some language that indicates that exact figures may vary. Because you want the public to be completely informed. And if there's different information out there, you don't have to go into it. But you should alert the public that this is one source of information, but sources vary.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the board? Patrick, do you have anything else you'd like to cover?
No, I don't have anything further to add unless there are other questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up to the public for any comments or discussion on this. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes. If there's anybody on Zoom, please unmute. All right. Do you have Carol Sinquini? If you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Supervisor. The only comment I would have in that first paragraph is, the water goes through the pipelines and it also supplies southern Mendocino County. It appears the focus is mostly on Sonoma and Marin, but it's an important water source for that whole Potter Valley to Hopland area as well.
All right. Thank you for that. Looks like we have, do you still have your hand up, Carol? Did you have more to say?
No, I took it, I thought I took it down, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you, thank you for your comment and for your help. Next is Betsy Khan, if you can unmute and start your three minutes.
I'm sorry, the unmute didn't work. Are you, are you hearing me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. This, this comment might seem a little far afield, but I think it's extremely relevant. I believe that the county should undertake an update of the Clear Lake Integrated Watershed Management Plan and incorporate this issue, which has never been addressed in terms of the protection of origins of headwaters in the county of Lake, which Carol just described to you. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. All right, any other comments before I bring it back to the board? Not hearing any? Bring it back to the board for either more discussion or action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just to kind of respond to the comment from Betsy Khan, we have been looking at the laws and regulations from the state of California when it comes to origins of water. So that is definitely something on our radar, and I appreciate the comment to look at embedding that into some of our other policies here locally. I did want to say that in the memo, it only states media outlets. It doesn't specify specifically which media outlets. And I just kind of wanted to see if Mr. Sullivan had a list of what those media outlets would be, because I believe that the idea, based on our conversations prior to this coming up, was that we were looking at out-of-county media outlets to make sure that people who do have some of our water that is being provided to them and understand the entire geography of where the water comes from and things like that, that they can understand it by putting it in their newspapers. So I'm wondering if you have a list of the media outlets?
So I did investigate this a bit, and we are going to have to expand our normal list. I did speak with Matthew Rostein in our office, and some of the outlets that we mentioned, which would be media outlets in Sonoma, Marin, San Francisco, potentially the East Bay, aren't typically included in our media releases. So we are working towards developing that list, but our goal would be to get those major outlets in that area. If there are any specific outlets that you're thinking of, we can definitely incorporate those in.
Yeah, so I know that there's the Time Standard in Humboldt, there's the, obviously, the Press Democrat in Sonoma County, the Yukaya Journal. I know that there's the Sonoma Valley Index Tribune, the Marin Independent, I believe is what it's called, for Marin County.
The Marin Independent Journal.
And I would love to, I believe it's called The Sun in Sonoma County, or La Voz, I forget which one it's called, but I would love to see if we can get this translated as well, because the counties that we are trying to communicate with do have a large Spanish-speaking population too. And again, looking for consensus from the board rather than just getting you a list.
I'm fine with that.
And I can add a few of the other entities we were looking at was the Press Democrat, the San Francisco Chronicle, I believe it was the Marin Independent Journal that you were referencing, and potentially the Contra Costa Times, just some of the other agencies, because there is an interlink, a potential interlink between Marin and the East Bay. So those are some of the additional outlets that we were aware of, that we were going to try to include.
That would be great.
All right. Any other comments? Ready for action then?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the public statement with amendments as proposed on Lake Pillsbury and direction to staff to distribute to media outlets.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we are at nine fifty-seven, so it looks like we're almost at ten o'clock. We take a short five-minute break, and we'll come back and address our ten o'clock six-point five item. All right. All right, welcome back from our break. We will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our six-point-five presentation of the County Medical Services Program, CMSP, by Kerry Brownstein, CPA, MHA, Executive Director, CMSP Governing Board. And with that, I will give the floor to Director Markatan. For her appointed.
Good morning. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, there we go.
I had a button clicking problem. I'd like to introduce Kerry Brownstein and Laura Moyer. They'll be presenting today on the County Medical Services Program, CMSP, that really, local departments do not have a lot to do with anymore post-implementation of Medi-Cal and the changes that went forward after that. And so I will let them explain how CMSP is still relevant to Lake County and opportunities that exist within that funding.
Okay.
So, thank you. I'm hoping everybody can hear me okay. Laura, do you want to share our PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
All right, hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. Again, I am Kerry Brownstein. I am the Executive Director at the County Medical Services Program Governing Board. And Laura Moyer is here to present with me, and she is our Grants Administrator. Next slide. Okay, so I'm going to give you a little background about CMSP, talk about our counties, our board members, our various benefit programs. Laura's going to take over and talk about our grant programs, and then we'll do a little bit on financing and CMSP resources. Next slide. All right, let's do some CMSP background. All right. So you may or may not be familiar with CMSP because we've changed a lot over the years. So in eighty-two, California law eliminated Medi-Cal eligibility for the medically indigenous adults, which that population became the county responsibility under with Section seventeen thousand. So CMSP was created in eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three, as a pooled risk health benefit program. Counties were eligible if they had three hundred thousand or less of a population in that base year of nineteen eighty, and we currently have thirty-five of the fifty-eight California counties as part of CMSP. In April nineteen ninety-five, our governing board was established, and our governing board is charged with overall policy and fiscal responsibility for CMSP, made up of ten county officials in the CMSP counties, and we have one ex officio non-voting state representative. So what Crystal was talking about was the ACA, and the ACA went into effect one-one, two thousand fourteen. And what happened with that is a lot of our population went over to Medi-Cal. So we had a significant decrease in our CMSP benefit membership. And now, since then, the board has implemented lots of other programs that are available to our thirty-five counties, including Path to Health, Connect to Care, and the grant programs that we're going to talk about. So CMSP is administered through contracts with AMM, who does, they're our third-party administrator for medical and dental benefit administration, MedImpact for pharmacy benefit administration. We have a relationship with the Department of Healthcare Services for our CMSP benefit program and eligibility data file transfers. And we have lots of other consultants and contractors that provide various services. We also have our, where Laura and I are, we're based out of Sacramento, a small administrative office. Since I've been here, going in my seventeenth year, it's always been about under, it's been under ten or less staff here for CMSP. Next slide. Okay, what are our counties? Here you see our thirty-five counties in California. You see mostly north. We have a little bit on the eastern side, and then we have Imperial way down in the south. Next slide. Who are our board members? All right, so we're made up of three supervisors, three CIOs, two health directors, and two welfare directors. So our chair is Brad Wagonconnect out of Napa County. He's been on our board more than, more years than me, so I think he's going maybe on his eighteenth year. So he is our chair. Richard Forster in Amador County is our vice chair. We also have Oscar Legas, our supervisor in Yolo County. Then we have Lassen, Humboldt, and Marin represent our CIOs. And Calusa, Madera, Yuba, and Glenn are our health and welfare directors. And Kimberly Chen is our ex officio member of our board. Next slide. We also have committees. So we have an executive committee made up of our board, might meet in between board meetings if something comes up. Planning and benefits committee made up of five county officials or county representatives and two provider beneficiary advocates, and that's the same for our eligibility committee. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to go over our benefit programs. There we go. We have, this is a great chart showing our three benefit programs and the difference, the differences between them. We have differences in age, we have differences in annual income, citizenship requirements, how to enroll. So CMSP, your county's social services department in Lake County would enroll anybody in CMSP. But participating health centers enroll folks into Path to Health and Connect to Care, not the county. So our contracted health centers. And what our coverages are. So Path to Health and Connect to Care are just primary care with some basic prescription medications, whereas CMSP is more of a full-scope Medi-Cal benefit. Next slide. All right, I'm going to go over a little bit more detail on each of the programs. CMSP eligibility, resident of a CMSP county, county's social services departments enroll those folks into CMSP. Income's between one hundred and thirty-nine percent and three hundred percent of the federal poverty level, and those dollars amounts are on that chart that I just showed. Not eligible for Medi-Cal or other publicly funded health coverage, and enrollment terms are six months with one month retroactive. Benefits are full-scope benefits, and there's also no-cost primary care. CMSP contracted providers within Lake County include Adventist, Lake County Tribal Health, Lakeview Health Center. And there's currently under a thousand members, about a little over seven hundred and fifty members into CMSP. Next slide. Path to Health is currently our biggest program with close to twelve thousand members. This is primary care for just the undocumented, twenty-six to forty-nine, and that those age ranges are because Medi-Cal covers this group under age twenty-six and fifteen over. So the clinics enroll, clinics enroll folks into Path to Health. And you can see there on the map that we have enrollment providers in those yellow counties. But you can get enrolled, even if you don't have an enrollment provider in your county. You can, for instance, you can look at the map there, and you see we have no enrollment providers in Lassen, but somebody can go over to Shasta, get enrolled, and get services at any of our contracted providers in any of our counties. Currently, there's one community health center with one location for enrollment providers in Lake County, and again, approximately twelve thousand members, growing every week. Next slide. Connect to Care, very similar, but at a little different age, twenty-one to sixty-four, and a different federal poverty level, one thirty-nine to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And again, you, we have different clinics enrolling folks in Connect to Care and Path to Health. Some are the same, some are different. So you can see in the orange there, where there's an enrollment provider. This pilot began in December twenty twenty, that's why the membership's a little bit smaller. And we have twenty-six community health centers with one hundred and ten locations in twenty-two counties. Lake County has one community health center with one location in Lake County that does enrollment for Connect to Care members. And there's, there's approximately, it says a thousand members, but I know we're over. We're probably close to about eleven or twelve hundred. Again, this one is our probably, probably currently our fastest-growing program. Next slide. This is just showing our participating enrollment clinics. Again, some are Connect to Care only, some are Path to Health only, and some enroll folks into both Path to Health and Connect to Care. And that's because they're two different enrollment systems, and some, some clinics chose to do one or the other, or both. Next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Laura, and she's going to talk about our grant programs.
Thanks, Kerry. We've got a couple of grant programs that we would love for people in Lake County to be aware of. First, our Local Indigenous Care Needs Grant Program. This is a collection of projects focused on local-level care management, continuity care, enabling services or disease management in CMSP counties. The governing board's allocated up to fifty million dollars to be granted under this program. To date, we've got twenty-two awarded planning grants. So these are projects that are lasting twelve months, awarded fifty thousand dollars or up to seventy-five thousand if working in more than one county. And we've awarded twenty-seven implementation grants. So these are three-year grants awarded up to one point five million dollars in CMSP counties. Specific to Lake County, we've awarded Redwood Community Services an implementation grant totaling one point four million dollars. With that funding, they're working to increase continuity of care by establishing a care coordination hub pathway for indigenous individuals in Lake County. Project partners with Redwood Community Services include Adventist Health Clear Lake, not Adventist, and Hope Rising of Lake County. A next grant we'd like you to know about is our COVID-nineteen emergency response grants, affectionately called our CIRC grants here at CMSP. The board launched these in response to the pandemic. Project periods for these grants are twelve months, and unlike our other grants, they began on a rolling basis to be flexible to meet county needs. Grant awards range anywhere from a hundred thousand to a million, depending on county population size, and the boards awarded a total of nine point six million under this effort to thirty-one out of thirty-five CMSP counties. CIRC grants focus on things like providing personal protective equipment or supplies, providing quarantine services, funding for staffing for public employees or providers needed for pandemic response, and also funding public education information and outreach in regards to the pandemic. CMSP awarded Lake County Health Services Department a CIRC grant of just over a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and they used this funding towards development of their Stock the Spread Temporary Unit Program that provided temporary quarantine and lodging services to individuals who are COVID-nineteen positive, and this also included COVID-nineteen positive fire evacuees last year. The project served a hundred and two individuals in Lake County. Next, we have our Health Systems Development Grants. This is a collection of twenty-three grants given to county or nonprofit organizations by the CMSP Governing Board. They've been awarded a collective total of six point eight million dollars. These projects all began May of two thousand nineteen, and they will be completed by April of two thousand twenty-four, with a maximum award amount of each of up to three hundred thousand dollars. HSG grants are focused on expanding access to care, coordinating or integrating healthcare or behavioral healthcare systems, or strengthening the overall healthcare delivery system. Specific to Lake County, CMSP awarded Mendocino Community Health Clinics three hundred thousand dollars in HSG funding to promote collaboration and system linkages through implementation of an electronic health record system. So under this system, they're able to better track patient data, patient outcomes, and help providers. help providers communicate more effectively. The system served 29,000 individuals to date. Next grant is our Specialty Care Access Grant. This is kind of a unique one-time grant spanning five years, totaling up to $5.7 million, and it's been granted to a nonprofit by the name of Operation Access that's working out of the Bay Area. What Operation Access does is they partner with local community clinics, specialists, hospitals, or other providers in their counties, and then they work to obtain donated care to provide it to individuals who are low-income, uninsured, or unfunded. So they bring together people in need with people willing to provide the donated care. They are currently working in 12 CMSP counties, including Lake County. As of 2021, they've served 10 people in Lake County to date, and they're working to expand to seven additional CMSP counties by the end of 2024. And so by the end of 2024, they should additionally be in all of the orange counties you see here on our map. Lastly, we'd love you to be aware of our Healthcare Workforce Development Program. CMSP funds two of these programs, and they work to strengthen the healthcare workforce in CMSP counties. Both of these programs are administered for CMSP by the Department of Healthcare Access and Information. The first program is the CMSP Loan Repayment Program. This is a program that awards specific healthcare professionals up to $50,000 in exchange for two years of providing service at a CMSP provider location. To date, CMSP has awarded 195 recipients, just over $6.7 million under this program. The second Healthcare Workforce Development Program is our Allied Healthcare Loan Repayment Program. Under this program, there are 43 awarded by Allied Healthcare professions, and applicants can receive up to $16,000 in exchange for one year of providing healthcare services at a CMSP provider location. 181 recipients have received a collective award total of about $2.1 million under this program to date. Specifically for Lake County, we've awarded four providers to date, a total of $123,324. Awarded professionals in Lake County include a physician's assistant, a nurse practitioner, and two physical therapists. So that is our grant programs, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to Carrie now to cover some financing information.
All right, so you might be wondering, how is CMSP financed? Okay, so as I mentioned, pre-ACA, Pre Affordable Care Act, we were a really large benefit program, and we were financed through county realignment. CMSP had their own realignment, and we had county participation fees. Post Affordable Care Act, we're a much smaller program, so county realignment went directly to the state. One thing to note that the county realignment was capped at the pre-ACA CMSP amount established in 1983. We had significantly reduced CMSP realignment through 1819, and then our realignment was postponed starting in 1920 until our reserves are reduced to two years of operating costs. County participation fees have been waived every fiscal year post-ACA. Next slide. All right, some CMSP resources for you. Next slide, there we go. Here's some CMSP staff, if you have any questions, myself, Megan Forrest, our Director of Finance Administration, Allison Callen is our Program Director, and Laura is our Grants Administrator. If you have any questions, please reach out to any of us. Next slide. All right, then we have websites galore. All right, so we have our main website, cmspcounties.org, but then we also have those two programs that I talked about, benefit programs I talked about earlier, Path to Health and Connect to Care. So we have those in English and in Spanish. Also, we have a, what we call our landing page. It's called careandreached.org, and you can go to that site and quickly see our benefit programs, and people can see what they might qualify for. All right, I think we're ready for any questions you might have for us.
Are there any questions from the board? Chief Director Sabatier?
Appreciate the presentation and appreciate the variety of programs available to our community residents to be able to access healthcare. You said that some of them came off of CMSP and joined into Medi-Cal. Is that because the criterias for one or the other started to overlap with the ACA, or is there still some potential for some CMSP patients to turn over into Medi-Cal?
So that's based on the federal poverty limit. So if somebody is under 138% of the federal poverty limit, they are, they would qualify for Medi-Cal. So CMSP, we used to, we used to cover 0 to, I believe it was 200% of the federal poverty level. We had a very big program, but once ACA started, ACA took the group 138% and less to Medi-Cal, and so we are, what we were left with were the 138, 200%. Our board got together and increased that to 300%. So that 138 and under is now qualified for Medi-Cal.
Okay. And then my last question is, when it comes to working with our healthcare facilities, do the reimbursements mimic what Medi-Cal reimbursements look like? Are they, how competitive are they in comparison?
Very similar, very similar. So your, we reimburse our clinics the same way Medi-Cal does. It's called a PPS rate. So clinics get a PPS rate, and then our other, you know, if we have outpatient or inpatient or emergency services, it's very similar to Medi-Cal reimbursement. We have on, on our website, you can find our payment rate policy, but it's very similar to what Medi-Cal does.
And then overall, my last question between, because one of the things that we're always aiming for here at the board is to try to move us forward with our health metrics that we have, and I'm sure you're very well aware of what our health metrics are in the county. Is there, is there a place to find data on what the health metrics of CMSP clients are versus other types of insurances?
So do you mean, like, what conditions people have, or do you mean?
Some of the same factors that we look at when we look at our health assessment needs that gives us that score of what our health metrics are in the county?
I don't believe we do the same as you. We do produce county reports on our website, so by county, we can show you who's in what aid code, and what kind of services they're getting, and how much we spend, but the health assessment and health metrics are probably a little bit different.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. If you have any questions or comments, please come to the microphone. If not, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand or unmute. I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the board, and would like to thank you for the presentation. If there's not any other questions or comments, and if you have anything else you'd like to share briefly before we close this item?
No, I don't think so. Please reach out to us if you have any questions. We are here for our 35 counties.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Brownstein, and thank you, Ms. Moore, as well. All right. We will now move on to our 6.6, Consideration of Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 22-23 for the County of Lake and Special Districts governed by the Board of Supervisors.
You have one minute.
What's that?
You have one minute. Anita's pointing out.
Oh, sorry.
30 seconds.
I totally thought we were like five minutes over already. I'm just, sorry.
This is unusual for us.
35 seconds.
You didn't feel her eyes burning?
All you have to listen for is the...
We gave you a bad time, but we love you, Anita. You can go now.
I can? Can I go now? No, just kidding. All right. I think we are good, so we'll, good? No, we're not, it looks like 10:29 still.
We're good now.
There we are.
There we go.
6.6, 10:30 a.m., public hearing, Consideration of Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 22-23 for the County of Lake and Special Districts governed by the Board of Supervisors, and A, Consideration of FY 22-23 Recommended Budget, B, Consideration of Proposed Resolution Mending the Position Allocation Chart for FY 22-23 to Conform to the Recommended Budget, C, Consideration of Authorization for Affected Department Heads to Proceed with Purchasing Selected Capital Assets Prior to the Adoption of the FY 22-23 Final Recommended Budget. With that, I'll give the floor to CIO Parker, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chair. We are pleased to present your board's consideration for, of the recommended budget for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The budget has been prepared in compliance with the County Budget Act and must be approved no later than June 30th and adopted no later than October 2nd. As you are aware, the adoption of the budget will take place after the public hearing currently scheduled for September 21st and 22nd. Your board may modify the recommended budget prior to approval. By approving the recommended budget, you authorize the expenditures of funds for the operational needs of county departments until your final budget is adopted. Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer Stephen Carter will present this item. And I apologize, I was still laughing from what we heard previously.
Good morning, board. So the recommended budget appropriations for all funds for fiscal year 22-23 is requested to be $337,455,551, which is an increase of $18,694,436. The general fund appropriations are $76,237,204, and that is actually down by $6,995,140, which is an adjustment in my memo because I had, there was a last-second change and had to update that figure. The guiding principles in preparing the recommended budget continue to be to develop a reasonable, sustainable budget that will enable a county to maintain fiscal solvency for the short and long term, and to minimize and/or completely avoid negative impacts on service levels provided to the public, and if at all possible, improve those services, preserve the county's general reserves, increase reserves if possible, and those would be for future budgetary needs, and to avoid utilization of a large number of layoffs, work forloes, or anything of that nature due to later on not having the funding needed. So with those in mind, it's always a difficult process, but thank you to the department heads and fiscal staff that helped work through this. Proud to present it. And one of the first parts that I want to go over in the fiscal impact is a couple changes that I want to say right off the top. So in Budget Unit 1120, we budgeted the ARPA funds, American Rescue Funds, of 12, 12 and a half million in an account 8122, which is to a revenue transfer out, operating transfer out into other budget units. Well, after talking with the Auditor's Office in probably a day or two ago, not all of those appropriations are in the budget, so we need to lower the amount going out of Budget Unit 1120 to now balance properly. So only $780,000 of those dollars are actually appropriated in the budget. We do plan on having the entire, if not most, of the 12 million budgeted for in September, but as of right now, only 780,000 is. So in account 8123, in Budget Unit 1120, actually need to lower that by $11,726,226. That sounds like a lot. What it is, is that's the ARPA money that we've already received, and we were going to transfer it out to other departments to, per the, per the plan. We're just going to remove that, and it'll be in fund balance available for September when it'll then be allocated. The new total would be $1,228,417 for that account. So the county budget overview, the governmental funds, general fund from fiscal year 2122 was $83,232,344. That has decreased to $76,237,204, and a lot of that is related to exactly the ARPA as well. Last year, when it first came in, we budgeted it as an appropriation, and this year, after talking to the Auditor's Office and changing how we were handling those funds, it's now going to be handled within the revenue accounts versus the appropriation accounts. And it only went down by 7 million. The difference is the increase, so if you drop it down 12, where's the other, about $6 million? That's in your payroll increases from the MOUs that were approved. The total governmental funds have gone up actually by $4,211,261, and the overall other funds, which include internal service funds, enterprise funds, and special districts, and other agencies, has increased $13,858,175, and that is mainly due to departments like Rhodes, where their budget has increased by a little over 3 million, behavioral health by a little over 2.2 million, social services admin by about 4.8 million, health administration by 2.2, which health administration actually has three different budget units. And the enterprise fund went up by 6.2 million, which is mainly one project. And then moving on to the general fund appropriations, as I stated earlier, general fund is, appropriations are expected to be $76,237,204, which is actually just over a 9% decrease year over And the general fund is funded through mainly discretionary revenues. There are a few discretionary revenues, the main one being property tax. And property tax, I have a table here showing year over year since 1516. It has been steadily increasing or staying pretty steady, and then over the last three years or so, it's been steadily increasing. For fiscal, for this current fiscal year of 2122, the budget was $25,416,331. I'm projecting it to be about $26,662,000, and that also goes into the budget request of, for fiscal year 2223, which is about a 2% increase over that estimate of $27,199,324. And that is the largest chunk of discretionary revenue that is put to general fund and any departments that you have general fund support of. Sales tax is the next most important discretionary, largest, I should say, not most important discretionary revenue, and Bradley Burns is the 1% sales tax, and we've received just over 3, almost 3.9 million through May. That is almost exactly 100,000 lower than the prior fiscal year, but we still do have one month to be received. And originally, I had projected this to come in higher than it's going to, and that's because there was an adjustment made at the state level that lowered our revenue by about 400,000. Can't get too much into it, other than it was a company's filings that were adjusted. So this year, expecting it to end at about, between 4.3 and 4.4 million, which is much higher than if you go just two years, three years back, in budgeting for 2223 to be about level, at about 4.4. That might be a little optimistic, so in September, may lower that depending on the new data coming in, you know, the first three months, seeing what's coming in. And then the second part of sales tax is the Prop 172 sales tax, which is statewide. Through May of 2022, we've received just over 4.4 million, which, if you read the memo, that's actually a million dollars more than the prior year at the same time. And we continue that, we, we think that that will continue at least for one more year to be at least flat, depending on how the pandemic, the end of the pandemic happens and people's habits. We'll have a new norm, we just don't know what that is yet, so we can, we'll continually watch it year over year and make sure that we don't highly over-budget or under-budget. The next revenue of interest is occupancy tax, sorry about that, TOT. This one is actually coming in pretty well, should reach the same levels as the prior year. We've received $720,169. We've received $720,169 so far this year, and we will still continue monitoring, see how, what happens with the new agreements potential and going after, um, certain lodging people, we'll say. And then, the next revenue source is cannabis tax. So, cannabis cultivation and business tax revenues, um, received through June 2nd, and I put a very specific date because we had to provide money back to some of the cultivators due to the Board decision to lower it down to 50%. Um, we've received $6,704,062, which is down a little over 1.6 million from the prior year. This was anticipated, of course, due to the, the actions and a couple of Board decisions. We also adjusted within the cannabis from Budget Unit 1072. Everything was going out of that budget unit, um, as an expense, and then into what accounts are 8080 for other budget units, which is a revenue reduction. So, what that means is the other department would have an appropriation, let's just say, for buying a building, and an 8080 would come in, and it would nullify it because it would be a negative appropriation. Well, that came into question once we started going into salaries because of our MOUs and the need to, um, that was Board-approved to support the salary increases. That's not a reimbursement, so to show the appropriations correctly within the different budget units, we switched it from 8080 for most of them to 8122 and 23, which is just an operating transfer of, the revenue comes in to 1072, and then it looks like it goes straight out to whatever budget unit is then using the funds. And then, the revenue will show there, and the appropriations, AKA salaries, will be in that budget unit. So, that's a change that was made rather recently. And with all the changes that have happened to cannabis, I do want to say that this is verging on the not being sustainable for the, the way we're heading. If, if we do hire all of our positions, we are gonna start running into not having enough ongoing revenue slash cannabis funds. I just want to put that warning out there. It's not imminent, but it is within the next three years, depending on how things go. And then, moving on to contingencies and reserves. Contingencies are appropriations that are in the general fund for just in case if revenues don't come in as anticipated. We are requesting that stay flat at $4,548,360, so there is a little bit of a cushion there. And our general, we're not, um, the general reserves are still being requested to be 12.5 million after last fiscal year, we increased it by 3.5 million. Thank you. Um, that represents about 16.4% of our recommended general fund appropriations. So, that would, if we receive no more revenue from the state and feds, we would be able to, um, it would sustain us for between just over two months. And going by best practices, you generally want at least three months. So, even though that sounds like a large dollar figure, it is actually not best practice or sufficient, in my opinion, for, because anything that happens, that is what we rely on for basically disaster, just not fire kind of disasters, financial disasters. Moving on to capital assets, this is where for capital improvements, um, in the fiscal year 2223, recommended budget includes funding for a number of capital projects, which are mostly grant and/or other special funding items. And because we switched it up to where this is the one hearing, and September is the adopted and two budget hearing, um, the Board will have to specifically approve whether or not a department can acquire that capital asset before September. And on the capital asset list, there's an actual indicator on if the department is requesting to potentially purchase it before September or not, and that's one of your, your, um, items you will talk about. So, some of the main capital assets, um, we're finally getting into the various deferred maintenance. Um, there's a million dollars from cannabis that was set aside for deferred maintenance. There is about $635,000 of roofs and capital assets projects just for deferred maintenance. Um, dispatch is asking for a logging recorder, which is general fund extraordinary of 100,000. Um, repeater and radio equipment replacements for OES, a new recording system for the assessor recorder, various roads and bridges, a medical van for public health. I don't want to read them all, but this is not an exhaustive list, it's just a highlight for a lot of the different departments of what's in there. I do want to highlight one, though, and that is, the library is getting very close and has the RFP for the, the mobile library van, and that one is in this budget as well. So, the county workforce, all funds for fiscal year 2223, recommended budget provides for a total workforce of 1,053.6 full-time equivalents, or FTEs, which is a net increase of 15.65 FTEs over adopted budget for 2122. So, any, any resolutions that have come through since adopted, including mid-year, are also included with that 15 number. So, it's not, there have been increases since, it's just, it's adopted to now. And the following positions are unfunded, so what that means is certain departments have considered positions unfunded, which means they cannot hire them until a funding source is identified. One Public Works Fiscal Coordinator, one Administrative Assistant in Public Works, one Assistant Engineer, all kinds of engineers in Budget Unit 1908 for Public Works, um, also a Special Projects Engineer in Engineering Budget Unit 1908, one Survey Tech, which is also in Engineering Budget Unit 1908, one Senior Planner in Budget Unit 2702, and three Planners in Budget Unit 2702 Community Development as well, one Deputy Assessor Recorder 12 Senior in Budget Unit 2707, two Library Assistants slash Library Techs in the Library Budget, Budget Unit 2602, ah, 2602, that's building, Budget Unit 6022, and one Branch Library Coordinator, which is also in the library. One Heavy Equipment and Fleet Maintenance Lead Worker, Budget Unit 9911. And then, I have also listed in the memo the actual increases and decreases in positions from the adopted until now, which some of them have already been approved, like I stated before. For the Administrative Office, this is a new request, um, the Accountant 12 Confidential requesting to have it removed and adding an Accountant Technician slash Senior Confidential instead, so lowering the position. County Council Risk Management Program Coordinator or Risk Manager removal, and replacing it with a Risk Analyst instead. And then, also within County Council, um, a Deputy County Council 123 Senior, adding one. If you recall, at mid-year, um, we put in the funding and left out the actual allocation, so this is actually making up for actions that were taken at mid-year. And then, in Information Technology Budget Unit 1904, adding a Deputy Information Technology Director, which had been removed a few years back. In Budget Unit 1908 Engineering, a Deputy County Surveyor, previously it was limited term, so it was just, you know, for a couple of years. It is now being requested to be permanent. Budget Unit 2110 District Determining, they're asking to add a Staff Service Analyst 12. Probation is asking for a Legal Administrative Assistant, and also to remove a Legal Administrative Assistant Senior. And then, also within probation, a Deputy Probation Officer Senior, adding one, that's one that is funded through the state, I believe. And then, Budget Unit 2702 Planning, Community Development Tech, CD Tech Senior, adding one. Animal Control Office Assistant, adding .75, that's actually replacing extra help. They have quite a few extra help within that department, and within the same budgetary figures, we are asking to make a few people, um, at least partially permanent, you know, instead of extra help. Animal Control Assistant, adding 2.75 positions, so 1.5 overall. And within the Recorder's Office, Supervising Deputy Assessor Recorder, that's also one that was limited term before, and requesting for it to be permanent. The prospective demands on the general fund, as we know them so far, Calpers, the percentages charged for miscellaneous as well as, um, our safety members. If you notice, if you, if you took a look, the percentages are actually going down, that does not mean it's costing less. So, because our raises are higher, it just means that it takes less of a percentage to reach the dollar amount needed. So, there's a normal rate of generally 9% to 10%, right off the top of whatever your payroll is, and then there's a very specific dollar amount for the unfunded liability. And because that's a very specific dollar amount, that's where your percentage starts going down because of the higher, um, pay. And I'll turn it over to Susan for closing remarks.
I wasn't planning on doing any closing remarks, except that, that's all right, except that, um, all departments worked very hard to get this, um, to us in a timely fashion. I do know that Mr. Harder is here, Scott DeLeon, um, head to leave Baralicia, will be here to answer any questions, and JT will be here shortly to answer any questions your Board may have.
Just kidding, I'm not quite done. So, of those changes that I requested be done, sorry about that, um, if you look in your budget book, the fund summary page, it makes some changes there. So, on line one, which is Fund 1, General County, for the estimated fund balance carryover or FBA as of June 30th, instead of being a little over 19 million, it's $7,700,715. And then, the estimated revenue for fiscal year 2223 is now $68,536,489. So, that's, that's where you can see the difference of when I'm removing the transfer out. And then, if you go to the complete, the total line, um, on the recommended reserves, there was an equation issue, it should read 104,678,118 in reserves as a county as a
Any questions for Stephen? And I'm gonna assume that this question's for any department head are we gonna get into here, because I, I have, I have a couple, but Supervisor Sabate, if you want to go ahead and...
I, I'm gonna make my comments more general. It's, um, number one, um, approving a budget, in my opinion, is one of the most important jobs that we have up here on this dais, um, and I, I appreciate the hard work that staff has done, but four days to go over so many line items and to comprehend exactly what's going to happen and how to foreshadow how this is going to affect our finances is just not enough for me to be able to go through, especially with an agenda that has so many things on there other than, uh, the budget. Uh, I know you all have been working on it for many months, uh, and even then, there's still changes and maybe some, uh, things that you may have missed or unknowns, uh, but for four days for myself and the public, that makes it really difficult. And I know I've been asking, and I've been offered a copy of it, but that copy was also told to me that changes were going to be made, and so it's worthless to me to start looking through and then make assumptions or make conclusions based on something that's going to change, but I just don't think that that's enough time. I have a concern on especially the cannabis stuff. I think that we are making a very large assumption on that we're going to collect something. I'm not saying we're not going to collect anything, but we know, and we sat here with people saying they still had product from the year before, uh, some people had two years' worth of products, um, now we dropped it to potentially getting 3.5 million. I believe that right now, 5.5 million is coming out of cannabis, which means we're not making enough revenue, which means we're dipping into the reserves of cannabis. So, that's 5.5 million if we actually bring in at least 3.5 million that's coming out. That's why we saw it go from close to 10 million to 7.5 million in reserves, and even if we keep going at this rate with potentially getting 3.5 million within three years, it's not sustainable, as was stated. And that's if we collect the 3.5 million, and I think that is a huge gamble for us to be making on the cannabis industry as the federal government is talking about opening up the borders and making everything interstate. What is that going to do? Does that help us? Does that hurt us? I'm thinking about our current economic challenges that we're dealing with, inflation, uh, gas prices is definitely already infecting and will complete, continue to infect, affect, uh, the prices of things, which includes the cost of us, uh, running even an office, uh, not just those doing public works, um, projects. So, while yes, we're balanced for this year, I do not see this as a balanced budget, as I do not see this as a sustainable budget where I can be sure that in five years from now, everything is fine. We have an increase of 5.5 staff, I get it that some are in, uh, in other places than general fund, um, but I think, I, I, I am very concerned. So, we also have a 2% increase on salaries happening for the next two or three years. Uh, all of these things, in my mind, I'm trying to go through this budget and trying to figure out, uh, how are we going to deal with this and so many unknowns that are coming up. I think we can do something. I don't want to be doom and gloom, but at the same time, by looking at the budget, we know we're heading towards a fiscal issue. We're adding more positions and we're spending, um, we're overspending. Uh, I know I did all the calculations, and that includes all of the, uh, every single department, which does not all have salaries, uh, but when I do the revenues versus the appropriations, we're continuously increasing the cost of running the county, not decreasing the cost where our revenues and our appropriations are more balanced. And so, I'm very concerned that we're adding those positions. I, I, I would love to, um, so I'll, I'll make a few statements on how I think we can solve some of these things. I think we need a, a freeze waiver on positions again, because we cannot keep adding more positions in anticipation that we're going to get more than 3.5 million in cannabis taxes. Even with what we have today, we're still losing, and if we hire more, we're gonna lose more, especially again, if we don't make the 3.5. I, I, um, we have approximately 232 positions, I think I wrote that somewhere, yeah, 232 vacancies right now, and I think we need to be strategic in what it is that we are filling and why, and what purpose does it have in progressing our economic development. Uh, our economic development is, is what worries me is we do not have a plan at all. Uh, we're waiting for somebody to come, and I think that, I've talked about it before, and I'm gonna talk about it today, we need a strategic plan in order to figure out how to deal with what's coming up to be prepared, uh, and if we have a strategic plan, it makes it a whole lot easier when money comes to us to be able to say, here's our next step in our plan to be able to move forward. But I don't know, and I don't see a plan that can make sure that we're going But I don't know, and I don't see a plan that can make sure that we're going to increase our sales tax, increase our property tax. I know we just did the housing assessment study today and approved that, but that's still far away from being completed, and that's far away from getting actual action on the ground to seeing that kind of development. Because we just heard from Mr. Carter that it's kind of in a three-year period that if we don't turn a corner, that there's some potential bad news that we have to deal with. And so I'm asking today for the board to make some changes today. I think we need to get rid of our discretionary funds from cannabis. That's $500,000 that we're throwing back into our ability to afford these things. I think we need to look at the new positions that we're opening. Some people are adding positions where there's 70% that are filled, and there's still a 30% vacancy. I need to understand better, why are we adding positions when there's vacancies in that same department right now? There might be a good reason, but without those reasons and without that understanding, we're just adding on to the burden of our revenues not meeting our appropriations. We're talking about in our expenses, and no offense to anybody whose district this is, I'm sure it's easier to speak about it when it's not my own, but we're talking about adding a park and new facilities. How are we going to maintain that and staff that when right now, we're declining, not in an incline? I really believe that we made a mistake, I made a mistake, by getting rid of the fiscal crisis plan where we were looking at reducing our staff by 10% or 20%, not staff, our positions that were empty by 10% or 20% in order to be able to meet this fiscal balance that we needed. And we stopped doing that. And I think we need to go back to doing that. I would love to see from the administration a five-year projection on expenses so that we know what we need to do to meet the revenues, to have those expenses be taken care of. I, I'm gonna stop there. I have a whole lot more on my list of things, but I am, I am concerned with the picture that we have, the knowledge that we have, and that we are adding more instead of finding ways to cut back in order to ensure that we don't meet that three-year potential crisis that is ahead of us.
Stephen?
So I do agree with like a five-year forecast. Are you thinking within General Fund, because it's discretionary revenue that's the problem, as well as all of departments?
I'll be honest, I usually like to see the big picture. I think it's healthy for our non-General Fund departments to get an understanding of where we are too, because we don't want them to have to hit that, a similar obstacle that we're looking at that's coming towards us. That obstacle affects us all. General Funds is more sensitive, definitely, than the non-General Fund departments, but I think it would be healthy to have a global perspective of what our five-year projection looks like.
Did you also want something specific to salaries?
I think salaries is definitely one of the biggest numbers that we should be looking at, especially since we know that there's a 2% increase, 2% increase, and things like that. So yes. But those are some of my suggestions on how to reduce the appropriation burdens that we have. They're not happy comments to make, but I think that we need to have some real conversation. I'm very concerned, not sure if the rest of the board is concerned, but I'm concerned about that 3.5 million estimate, because I don't know that the cannabis market can provide that. And at one point, you know we're gonna have that same conversation about reducing the taxes again, because it's not, it's a fixed number. It's not a flexible number like a sales tax number. And so as it drops some more and becomes more difficult, and you become a actual real farmer where it's hard to farm, not growing a crop at a high value like it was, they're gonna be right back asking us the same thing. And if we want the industry to survive, then we probably will also make some changes at one point or see them walk away and just completely disappear from our county. And so we have some difficult tasks ahead of us. But I'm gonna be honest, today, I cannot approve this budget as is, because then we would allow for 25% of our year to go by that leads us in a direction that I'm very concerned about going into.
Stephen, you have anything else to add, Stephen?
No. Supervisor... Well, actually, I do.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Something that, because of bringing up the cannabis and towards the MOUs and everything, I wanted to bring up that it's right now scheduled to be for $5,476,183 from cannabis to help pay for the MOUs, of which $128,987 is for Budget Unit 2112, which is child support. It's the only non-General Fund department, for a little clarification.
And we approved that letter today to try to see if we can make that change at the state level.
All right. Supervisor Baiska?
Yeah, I appreciate that Stephen spent a couple hours with me on Friday going over this. I do agree that we need a strategic plan and we need to do some forecasting, because we are in a spot that calls for that. And just to let you know, that's geothermal royalties that have been sitting and have not gone into the Cobb community, none of those funds have gone into that community since 19, since the 80s. So that is a specific project for a specific community. That's not just coming out of thin air. And that there is sustainability built into that, and this is something that we've been working on for a long time with Visioning. So that's why that's there. There's not a project to, it's being appropriated, but the project isn't there yet. So it's gonna sit for a while. But when we think about those geothermal funds, they need to go back to the community that is being affected. So I'm all in favor of the priorities being laid out in a strategic plan and some different projections so that we have ideas. And it was actually an email that I was sending to you this morning, Stephen, but I wanted to chat with you first. I'm glad you brought it up.
Any comments? No? I just wanted to ask again about the positions that you had mentioned under County Workforce. And some of those, they'll basically be, will they be replacing other positions that aren't filled already? Or is that something that, I think you were talking about, right Supervisor Sabate, is looking at the positions that aren't being filled and then appropriating maybe these if they're in the same department to those? As opposed to just approving the positions without looking at what you can kind of remove, if that makes sense? Ms. Grant?
I can offer that though I'm slated to have one additional position, you can remove it. I've got two positions I can't fill right now. I'm hoping to desperately, because I'm tired, but I can certainly, we haven't had it for 30 years, so I'm sure we can, we can go forward during a time of uncertainty, and I'm happy to, to do so.
And that's kind of like what I'm, what I don't know if that's what I heard, or, but I'm thinking of is positions that aren't being used as it is. If we, if it's within departments, can they basically fill that?
Well, I, yeah, I think we need to be strategic about that, because there are some positions that we desperately need. And so I think there needs to be a lot more thought put into that before we make any sweeping decisions today.
Would there be a possibility that if there was a decision to approve the positions that are, you know, presented before us, to look at that strategic, non-filled positions to remove at a later date, like in September? Or would that be something that wouldn't be allowed? Or would that be too far out?
We could make adjustments in September, but if, if the position is open, they can fill it, unless there's a freeze, which would then go to the CIO for approval or not.
All right. And I'm also just thinking, like, if they haven't been filled in 30 years, in some instances, why would they be filled?
In that specific instance.
I'm just giving examples of others too, that I know aren't filled.
It's not the positions haven't been filled in 30 years, it's there hasn't been a position added in my office for 30 years.
My mistake, sorry. Okay, I get it. Thank you. Supervisor Sabate?
And I think that that's why I didn't provide specifics of positions, because it's more than just reviewing a number. It's understanding what does that position do for the department? Is that a position that's going to help generate more revenue by, by being a part of a team that, that works with revenue generation? And I didn't speak to, to other things that I forgot to mention. We desperately need to get up to date on our interests that we're getting from our new contract with our investment opportunity. I do not believe that we have had our first quarter of 2022 put into our books at this moment in time, and we are now in the fourth quarter of 2022. And how are we supposed to manage or even plan if we're almost a whole year behind in getting these things done? We've also, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we've been doing a lot more tax auctions with a whole lot more properties. Where does that fit? It almost took a whole year from June of 2021 to finally, maybe less than a month ago, to see those numbers coming into our books as well. So if we can figure out how to get our timelines a whole lot closer, we can look at real time, what do we have in our accounts, rather than trying to struggle? And my issue with adding more positions is it restricts money in a place that may never be used. When the people are paying taxes to get services, if it just stays in a position that's salaried that doesn't get hired, then we've trapped that money from possibly becoming a service that gets put back into the community. And again, it's a lot more difficult and complicated than, than that too, but that's one of the reasons why I really think we need to review that and have a good conversation about it.
Vice Chair Scott?
I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on this. I know we've only been able to have it for four days, but I think as supervisors, we need to rely on staff that we've hired to do this job, that they've done their due diligence in preparing this budget for us. So that's where I'm at on this. I think we also have to realize that we're not hanging our hat everything on cannabis, that we have so many things in the works that we've been working on to try to make sure that we have more money coming into Lake County. The investments is one of them. We're unsure of what that looks like. Honestly, I don't think we're gonna see what that looks like till after the first of the year, till Patrick gets in that office and straightens that out. Again, just appreciate everything the staff has done. You know, we've just implemented so many different things. I don't think we've completely seen what the wage increase is, is going to do to Lake County. I'm optimistic. I think just having those wages increases, getting staff in place, I believe we're gonna see the fact that we're gonna be saving money, not having to continue hiring and going through that process with employees. We're gonna see a money savings, but we just haven't really seen all that yet. It's been too early. So just thank you again, and I'm ready to approve this budget today.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, those are some of my thoughts also, as we move forward. Absolutely. Looking at the future and the uncertainty of the times that we have, obviously inflation, gas, everything that's going on. But, you know, yes, we definitely move forward with some significant, you know, changes, you know, that we did last year with the MOUs that we created, but, you know, I'm ready to move forward too with the recommendations today. And then to have them look at, I like the idea of the long-term strategic plan or, you know, economic development plan to be brought back to us and look at those, look at the overall costs, everything to be done between now and September, or when we approve the final budget. But looking at those things, I really think, you know, yeah, we can go into it cautiously and understand there may be changes need to be made, but I'm prepared to move forward with the budget as presented, so that's where I'm at.
Go ahead, Steve.
Stephen?
I did want to make some comments related to the interest. So for fiscal year 2223, I have only projected about $200,000. Only within the last, you know, the last four years or so, we normally would get about $800,000, just within the General Fund. So now that we have the new vendor onboard, I haven't seen, it's in the three-year ramp-up period, it is extremely likely that it's gonna come in much higher than $200,000 even next year. Now, once it's past that three-year ramp-up period, it should be over $1 million for the General Fund. So there are good things happening, it just, it's unknown at this stage, just like the money going out is semi unknown. So I just wanted to bring that up. And also, the Teeter Fund hasn't provided any funding to the General Fund in the last couple years. That normally runs between $500,000 and $800,000. And Kathy Sederlin brought up to me just recently that we are gonna expect what is budgeted right now as zero, at least $500,000 coming into the General Fund for, from the Teeter in 2223, which would be changed in September. So those are two actual good things in revenue that I have not taken into consideration in this budget, because there were too many unknowns.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments from the board? I just had a question, this is like not even at this echelon, it was actually for Director Harder, if I can just ask you a question about the CSA budgets and whatnot. Were the advisory committees, they have their opportunities to review the budget and whatnot and confer with the special districts, departments, and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just making sure, I know there was some concern about that when I went before, but I just wanted to make sure and confirm that with you is all I really wanted to do, so.
We've got a meeting with CSA II Advisory Committee on Thursday of this week, so we've been working with them as we prepare this, but if they've got any concerns...
Probably needs to come to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you for having my back.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, we work with the advisory committees in the preparation, and we did specifically with CSA II leading up to today as well. But I do have another follow-up meeting with them on Thursday, so if there's changes, we'll bring those to you before September. But the budget that's presented to you today specifically for CSA II has included their, their desired capital projects and what have you. So we're just gonna be explaining some additional details on Thursday is what I anticipate.
Thank you. Thank you for that, yeah. I think Supervisor Sabate?
Yeah, just one last thing, and I think I've said this in the previous years before, but it's, it's very difficult, and the way that the budget is written out, very large print makes it easy to read, but it doesn't provide enough columns. It would be really nice to have an actual, because all we see is what was recommended last year. We know that's not what happened, because it's always gonna change based on what the actuals are. And then we see what's recommended this year, adjusted, and final. But when you don't have actuals, you have to start reopening up past budgets, and it's nice to have everything just kind of in columns to be able to see trends and see stuff. So just requesting again that we have actuals, at least one year of actuals when it comes to our budget sheets, because it helps to know what we actually spent, not what we're recommending or estimating that we will.
I can talk with IT to adjust our reports. The actuals, it would be, so like an example of this fiscal year's budget, it would be the actuals for 2021...
That's the only one we have.
And then adopted, and then what you see here.
Yeah.
The problem, it is very large. If we put another column in, we'll try to shrink it down. I'll see what we can come up with.
All right. If everybody agrees.
Any other questions or comments from the board before I open up the public input? All right. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? Joan? If you can come to the mic, please, state your name for the record.
Joan Moss. I didn't understand a lot of things. I want to know what capital assets are. I want to know if we're in the red or in the black. And I appreciate you people, because you know what was said. Thank you. I really don't know much about this, but I just, I think that the state is in the bad situation, the country is in the bad... situation, the country is in the bad situation because of the pandemic, and now because of the drought, it's amazing that we can even think straight. And I'm glad that you people are thinking straight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Did you want to?
We're in the red or the black?
Capital assets and black or the red?
So in the red or black, we are structurally balanced, so we're technically in the black. Where the fund balance available of $7,700,000 is being used, which would make you, it appear that it potentially was in the red, that is one-time money carried over from a prior year for one-time expenses. So like salary isn't every year thing, so that needs to come out of a certain type of ongoing revenue. But buying a building, we're not buying a building, but if we bought a building, that is a one-time expense which can be in, that's, so we're in the, we're in the black as a whole. We're structurally balanced. As a capital asset goes, that depends on whether it's equipment or building, but it's large dollar amounts, so equipment over 5,000 that goes over to where the auditors office has to handle it differently and depreciate it, as well as like remodels, so it would depreciate, items that would be depreciating.
And I know this is a very sensitive question, and I apologize. I, he's smiling.
Go ahead. Please.
I want to know how much of this budget is from emergency funds? I understood a lot of the cannabis analysis. I'm not going to ask about that. But when you declare an emergency, you get funds, right?
Not always.
That's why I want to know, and I know I'm asking an impossible question right now, but are we living on emergency funds? That's something we can't do that. We can't, we really shouldn't have to do that. But everybody, and it's a bad question. I apologize. But I just wonder.
Thank you for your question. Stephen?
Simply put, no, we are not. The emergency funds are housed within Budget Unit 1920, and that budget unit does run on emergency funds, as well as, over the course of the last few years, we have transferred $2 million of general fund and $2 million of state funding that we received just for this type of activity, so that if a disaster happens, we have the funding for it. The only emergency funds that are theoretically in the other sections of the budget is the ARPA, and that is the one-time money that actually only $780,000 is budgeted, and it's actually all in special districts for a bridge and septic hauling station.
All right. Joan, Joan, you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? All right. Hearing none, we have, I think it's Betsy Khan, if you'd like to unmute, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one comment and one question. The comment is that I agree with Mr. Sabatier that an actual long-term strategic plan and a, an analysis should be performed. Year after year after year, we hear about having an economic development plan. I have never seen one that actually contains analysis of this kind. But my question is about Prop 172 funding. Could you please just tell me if there is a policy available that describes how those funds are dispersed, and are they dispersed to the first responder agencies, or do they go into our general fund? Thank you.
Stephen?
The Prop 172 funds are deposited into Budget Unit 1120, which is general fund, but then moved directly in as net county cost, which is our general fund contribution to the sheriff and those agencies.
Thank you for that. Are there any other citizens that'd like to make any comments on this? All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for either further discussion or action. CAO?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to remind the board that the approval today basically allows for the expenditures beginning July 1st for the different county departments. I think with the analysis that we're going to provide, the five-year should help with those discussions that we're going to have in September. And that's the only comment that I wish to make at this time.
And so I'm thinking, too, about the topic that I brought up earlier. I know that some of the positions, though, as well, they're in specific departments that could produce some sort of return. I just understand, too, that in looking at it with, in regard to Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, would be concerned that maybe in the near future or a couple of years down the road, we'd be at an impasse. But at the same time, just I know that a lot of departments are doing multiple projects and positions amongst themselves and not being able to complete, or they're having to juggle a lot, and it puts us in a real, real difficult position. So it's, this is a really heavy decision, and I just wanted to highlight that, that I recognize, and I understand why the positions are needed. But just thinking about the future, it's a worrisome thing, so it's a, that's all I have on that. But any other comments or? I see. Betsy, you have your hand up again. I closed public input. I didn't know if you, okay, yeah.
Ready for action?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2022, 23 recommended budget.
Second.
I want to see, wait a second, if those are, are those?
There's three of them.
Oh, okay, yeah, they are motion. I thought they were, for a second, I thought it was a resolution, but the first one's a motion. So I have a motion and a second. CAO Parker?
I would say to include the adjustments that Mr. Carter provided to the board, there were last-minute changes. Include that statement in the motion.
With amendments, so I move to approve fiscal year 2022, 23 recommended budget with amendments.
Second.
Does that work, Ms. Grant? Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item B?
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of certain capital assets prior to approval of the adopted budget.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. And are there, let's see, I don't see anything else on that one. So we're at 1129. Let's move to the next item. We'll go to, it looks like the sheriff's here, so we'll go on to 7.2. Do we have Director Portney online as well? I think so.
Yeah, I saw him.
All right. Consideration of Second Amendment to the Agreement for Medical Services at the Lake County Detention Facility for a six-month extension in the amount of $1,551,647.22. And B, consideration and discussion of the establishment of an ad hoc committee and its role and purpose. And so with that, I will open this item. CAO Parker?
Yes, this was discussed last week. We provided the amendment. We did have to make a last-minute edit because it was, the date was wrong. It was a five-month date instead of a six-month date. Thank you, Bruno, for catching that. And so for that item, that's, that just extends the current agreement for six more months. The second item, do you wish me to go forward? Keep going? Okay. Is regarding the RFP and the establishment of a possible ad hoc committee to move, to actually establish the scope of the RFP for medical services for the detention facility.
With that, I don't know if the sheriff, you'd like to come up or?
Good morning. As far as item A, I don't have any input on that. It's the Health Services Administration's contract seeking the extension. I'd like to see, of course, see that get approved so we can continue to provide the medical services at the jail. As far as an ad hoc committee, I would oppose the idea of an ad hoc committee. I don't know that there's a need for that. The statutory obligations and requirements are well outlined within case law and Title 15, as well as the Penal Code. I don't know that an ad hoc committee would serve a useful purpose. I think there's county staff that can get together and craft an RFP. I've reached out to other sheriff's offices and counties throughout the state and been provided with RFPs from multiple counties that continue to pour in. I've shared those with county admin, and I think we could probably get something crafted without the use of an ad hoc committee.
All right, thank you. Director Portney, are you on? Would you like to? There you go.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you, CAO Parker, for getting us on the agenda and working with the Health Services Department to finalize the six-month extension and paperwork with WellPath. I would agree with Sheriff Martin that maybe an ad hoc committee to establish and draft the MOU may not be necessary, but identifying the pre-in-house and exit strategies for WellPath and Health Services in our county will require some form of group to establish roles, responsibilities, and objectives to address the social determinants of health. If we do not identify the rules and expectations of partnering agencies, we will continue to see reduced or enhanced, rather, mortality in our county as a result of a lack of wraparound services and care. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Portney. All right. Any Supervisor Sabatier?
When I met with CAO Parker yesterday, I actually said the exact same thing. I hope that we can just get our staff, department heads together, knock out an RFP, and then come back with what the proposals were and which one is the best fit for the services that are required. I think that would be the easiest way.
Sheriff Martin?
Sure. The ideas of having social determinants of health in the county are lofty. I don't know that they're appropriate to these discussions. We're simply looking for medical services to be provided for our inmates, and that's not necessarily going to result in improved medical conditions. It's to provide the minimum standard of care that's required by the law. If we can get extra programs in there, that's, that's great. The Health Services Director mentioned some exit strategy or an exit plan for Health Services Department of WellPath. I'm not aware of any discussions that would lead one to believe that WellPath isn't a viable alternative or candidate for medical services. I think it's a little bit too early to be starting those discussions, and this also goes back to the discussion from last week. And I know it's not on today's agenda, but I didn't get an answer from last week on who's going to be the responsible agency for administering this contract once it is drafted.
All right, thank you. Did you have your hand? I thought.
I did, I did.
Yes. Go ahead, CAO.
Yes. I, thank you, Sheriff. He did send out on the listserv the question of, do you have a recent or a current RFP? And he's provided those samples for me. I've already initiated, we've already initiated the review of that, and I do feel if the board sees fit, that we could easily develop the scope in conjunction with the different departments and bring that, get that, you know, out the door in a very short period of time, probably July or sooner. So, well, we'll, we'll work very hard to get it done within two to three weeks.
All right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Director Portney, you had your hand up?
Thank you, CAO, for your dedication to supporting the county and leadership and seeing this through. I look forward to working with you on that. I would respectfully argue that social determinants of health do play an important role in how we address whole person care, especially when we are looking at the new Calium Initiative, which is full scope wraparound care services that should be incorporated. I look forward to looking into how we do that with our key stakeholders when we establish the new RFP for biomedical services. And just to keep at the forefront of our mind as we talk, spoke about the budget and the potential strategic plan taking into inflation, keeping in mind that these rates may fluctuate in the future. So maybe we might have to, as we go through the RFP process, identify what we can do in-house and what we need to outsource. So when we look at something like connecting people to services when they leave jail, maybe not relying so heavily on WellPath to be that service connector, but maybe leveraging either health services, social services, or behavioral health services. These are all in the wee details when we get to the RFP process. And my final question comments would be, when it comes to RFP dissemination for potential candidates to execute this work, who is going to be proctoring the RFP process, putting together the panel? Is this going, do we need specific key stakeholders to do this? Those are some questions that I have that maybe can be answered offline. Thank you.
All right. CAO?
Yes, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions offline, Director Portney. We do have a policy and procedures in place. And we'll, with your permission, the board's permission, we'll take the lead on it to get it, so we can get it done. We, we're well-versed in RFPs, so we're more than willing to assist in moving this forward quickly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, CAO Parker. I appreciate you again.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And at this moment, I know that the contract is being conducted by Health Services, and I would suggest that that's where it probably will end up. But if there's reasons that make it for why it should be moved to a different place, that those reasons need to be for better outcomes. But at this moment, I would suggest that that would be the direction that I'm looking, that I'm expecting it to go.
All right. Go ahead and open this up to the public. If there's any comments from the public in the chambers or even on Zoom, please raise your hand.
I was about to go under his table.
Oh, no. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. And so if I'm hearing correctly, of course, we have the extension, but then we're, it's looking ad hoc committee, basically, or should we just go ahead and do the first item first and then move on to that? Ms. Grant?
I think you can do the first item first, and if you determine that there's still a need for the second, then you can take action on that as well.
Thank you. So on the first item, the extension, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Medical Services at the, medical services at the Lake County Detention Facility for a six-month, six-month extension in the amount of $1,551,647.22.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item B, I know that both of the sheriff and the Director Portney has stated they don't, they don't recommend the ad hoc committee, so I'm not sure where we're at with that.
I, I agree.
Just work with the CAO to get this completed.
All right. With that, would I need to open up for public input? Brief? With that, would I need to open up for public input briefly? And then, if there's anyone in the public that would like to state anything on this portion of the item on the agenda? I'm not seeing any in the chambers or on Zoom. Bring it back to the board to basically just dismiss this item. So with that, that closes that. We will move on to item.
Let's do 7.8 since we have the sheriff.
That's what I was gonna, yeah. Thank you, though. Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna move to. Discussion of Sheriff's Department staffing and B, consideration and approval of budget transfer from 1781 to 2202. Thank you, Vice Chair. Sheriff Martin?
So I left without my notes on my desk. I plan to return later in the meeting, but I'll try to convey the message as best as possible from my memory. I want to bring this item to the board to let you know of the staffing issues. I know the staffing concerns were discussed during the budget hearing, and it seems like they're a constant source of concern amongst the county. In particular, with the sheriff's office, we continue to have problems recruiting and now retaining people. Out of the 156 positions that we have allocated, we currently have 119 of them filled. Out of those 119, we currently have 12 people that are not serving full functions based on light duty assignments, modified duty for various injuries, or that are off on some sort of mandated leave, family medical leave, some other legally required leave. Where we're feeling those impacts are, first, in patrol. Out of our patrol allocations, we have 43 positions, or 42 positions allocated for patrol in our deputy sheriff series. With those, we staff the roadmap task force and our cannabis team with four. We have four in detectives. We have some that are assigned to civil and one assigned to, full-time to background and recruiting efforts. That leaves us with a total of 16 deputy sheriffs that are assigned to patrol. We run 12-hour shifts, which leaves us with four deputy sheriffs to work each shift for a 12-hour shift, either three or four days a week. Now, when somebody has court, calls in sick, has to take vacation, or has to attend some training, that obviously reduces that number of staff that are available. Out of those patrol deputy positions, we also have three that are augmenting operations in our dispatch center and three that are augmenting operations in the correctional facility. Moving along to the dispatch center, we currently have 10 allocated positions. As of today, we only have six of those positions filled with three or two of the positions being trainee positions. They fall into that category of not being fully deployable because they have not yet completed their training. The good news is maybe, I think we're looking towards the end of July and the beginning of August to getting those two off of training, but until that time, we're going to continue to have to staff it with peace officers, deputy sheriffs that are working in there to augment. Even when the two come off training, we're probably, we're still going to have to continue with staffing it with at least one deputy sheriff. With four functioning dispatchers, obviously, we run two dispatchers at a time, 24 hours a day, which would mean they'd have to work 12-hour shifts every day of the week without ever having a day off, and that's the need to augment those positions in our dispatch center. At the jail, we currently have 15 vacant positions. We have three people that we know of that are in backgrounds to leave to go to other agencies. We lost one of our, we were at 14 last week. We lost one of our correctional officers to the probation department, which is good for the county. We continue to keep that person employed here, but it certainly hinders our ability to provide services at the jail. Out of those, at the allocated positions out there, we have six people that are on either light or modified duty or out for, for legally mandated leave, medical reasons or family leave, child bonding, those types of things. The staffing is challenging. I've said here many times at the board meetings that I'd love to provide extra services. We struggle to provide the services that are legally required to provide. And starting on January 1st, we're going to have additional requirements imposed by function of the law, particularly at the jail. We augment, as I said earlier, we augment the jail with three deputy sheriffs. As we continue to lose people from the jail, either going elsewhere or retiring, we have one person that's retiring this year, and at least one other, there's probably a couple out there that are eligible, but we know of one that has indicated their intention to retire in September of this year. As we continue to lose people out of the jail, they're going to have to be replaced on a one-for-one basis by removing deputy sheriffs either out of specialty assignments, which means we wouldn't be able to staff the roadmap task force or cannabis enforcement. We've already removed our school resource officer out of the Canockta School District with the end of the school and placed that deputy into a position at the, at the jail to fill one of those vacant positions. So I want to bring this to the board to kind of, as an intro to why we're going to ask for this budget transfer and explanation as to why we need to transfer some money in dispatch budget. And also, just as importantly, to let the board know that some of these legal requirements that are coming down, we're not going to make them. We're just, we're not going to be able to fulfill our legal obligations without a very drastic change in our staffing, our staffing plans. And that drastic change is either going to be, we're going to have to hire a whole bunch more people, which across the nation, across the state, hiring challenges in law enforcement are top headlines. It's not a unique condition right here in Lake County, but it's certainly something we're going to be dealing with, or we're going to have to cut additional services elsewhere. And that would come first by way of cutting services either to the cannabis enforcement or to the roadmap task force. And eventually, if we had to continue cuts, it would impact patrol operations. With the dispatch budget, I think Mr. Carter's going to do a presentation on the source of the funds and the mechanisms by which that'll occur. But the reason that occurred is because we're having to fill vacant dispatcher positions with the higher paid classification of peace officers. I know the obvious question that comes up is why do we have highly paid deputy sheriffs performing a, the function that's traditionally, or that's funded for a not-so-highly-paid public safety dispatcher? And those reasons are because of post-re requirements. We're not allowed to have somebody who's either not a dispatcher or a peace officer perform those functions in a public safety communication center. With that, I'm happy to entertain some questions. If you have any questions about our recruiting efforts, I will tell you about the exhaustive efforts that we've made in recruiting, and we continue to find challenges in getting people to come to work here and, more importantly, to stay.
I do have a question, but I'll ask you offline, what the timeline looks like in regards to how long it will be before this starts taking away from those other subjects, if that's okay? Yeah. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So thank you for that. Definitely a bad situation when you have to pay a whole lot more for something because you can't find the right people to fill in those positions. And in return, it's also a loss of policing our streets. So I appreciate the conversation being brought to us. I think it's definitely something that our entire community is sensitive to. I have a question that may raise hairs on the back of your neck, but the total budget that we have for the dispatcher, if by chance we went to a third-party dispatching system, what would that difference look like?
Without doing some research, I don't know. There's, I believe Napa County has a contract with the Napa Police Department for their dispatch services. Shasta County contract with a private entity to provide dispatch services in Shasta County, and I don't know what those numbers look like.
That's my only, it's not something I want to do. I recognize the recognition of the voice in your earpiece, to know you have a personal relationship with that person and that individual, because it's important to trust that voice and it's important to, that that voice be the greatest help and the greatest comfort for an officer, especially in a harrowing situation. But unfortunately, if all we're doing is filling that dispatcher room with police officers, deputies, then at that point, it just seems to go backwards on what we're trying to attempt to do for our community as well. So that's why I bring that up. It's not the direction I want to take, but knowing those numbers, I think, can help us at least look at all the options.
When was last night? Yeah, when was the last time you brought on a new dispatcher?
We have two that are in training right now.
Okay.
Before that, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So we have two that are, like I said, I mentioned earlier, at the end of July, beginning of August, they should be completing their training. We had three. We're down to two now.
And I'll just add the obvious that if somebody calls in sick and you're supposed to have two people, that makes breaks, things like that, very impossible to happen without potentially jeopardizing something. And so that, that creates the forceful need to keep those deputies in there because of that. So I think it's rough.
It turns, it can sometimes turn a 12-hour shift into a 16-hour shift as well. Either the teamwork that's exhibited up there is good, so I think they're very considerate of each other's time. They're all in the same boat. I haven't heard any issues about somebody calling in sick at the last minute. They're generally pretty considerate in giving plenty of advance notice so we can find staffing changes. But yes, it, it's problematic. The other issue that it causes is that we have people that wanted to come here to be deputy sheriffs, and they find themselves performing functions that aren't that, and it further erodes at morale.
And so I think that's basically the discussion, so I'll open it up for public before I go on to item B with the budget transfer. I'm not seeing anyone, so with the budget transfer, you pretty much stated you'd like Stephen to go ahead and go from there, right?
He does really well at this.
All right, go ahead, Stephen.
So that was news to me. But the budget transfer, for your board's consideration, is actually transferring funds from Budget Unit 1781, which is special projects. There are funds available in 2380 that are, in the current year, are not being utilized of $115,000, which would then be transferred into Budget Unit 2202. So it'd be from Budget Unit 1781 to Budget Unit 2201, uh, 2202, sorry, dispatch, into various accounts for payroll.
All right.
And that's to cover the extra costs related to the deputy sheriffs in there.
Any other comments, Sheriff?
That's all I have. I wanted to offer an explanation that, you know, this is the reason we're, we want to be good stewards of the public's dollars. I think there's always going to be questions on how come there wasn't enough money in there in the first place? And the reason is we're, we didn't budget for deputy sheriffs in there, but we have to, we have to use somebody and legally required use deputy sheriffs.
Yeah, this wasn't a budging error. It was because of staffing, extra staffing costs.
All right.
I just had one question, and this is, you'll educate me on this, but we just went through, obviously, the global pandemic and the remote work opportunities. Is that ever something for dispatch? It's not allowable by state law, or it's just, just a question? I'm just asking, I'm not.
The, the buildings have, all the servers are in there. There's CLETS terminals that the state would have to come in and approve to be put in people's homes. There's security requirements for CLETS information that has to go out that you simply can't comply with in somebody's private residence.
Okay, just wanted to ask that question, you know, because that could, you know, we know that the world is changing, people are out there working, so just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Open it up to the public for any comments or concerns on this item. I'm not seeing anyone with the hand raised.
I was hoping somebody from the public would come on and ask where they apply.
I'll wait an extra second for that. Bring it back to the board, close the public input for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have one last question, just as an explanation, because I was told where the money is coming from. I'm just curious why it's coming from 1781, and I know that you have some reserves in some of your many budgets. Just kind of curious why it's coming from 1781 instead of the others.
For me or for Mr. Carter?
Either one.
Technically, it's for you, but I can answer for you.
Okay.
So the reserves that he has are for very specific, the reason why they're in that fund in a reserve, they're for, only can be used for specific things. The only possible funding source he has that is in that kind of realm would be the local law enforcement, which is being set aside for the armory. So this is general fund not being utilized in 1781 to help out 2202, because 2201, the sheriff's actual main budget and the jail are razor-thin as well. So he doesn't have it in other budget units other than the ones that are pigeonholed for specific activities, and this is not one of them.
And this is in the 2122? We're not, this is not, okay.
Correct.
Basically the same as the budget conversation, but 2122?
Oh, looks like we have a hand up. Director Metcalf?
Am I too late? I, I just, I appreciate what Sheriff Martin is saying. My department is going through similar issues, but I just want to remind the board that his staffing issues affect other departments as well, mine included. And I just kind of want to, want to, want to bring that to the board, that his staffing shortages do impact other departments and not in a good way. So I just wanted to mention that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget transfer from 1781 to 2202.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Taylor. All right. With that, we are actually at 11:57. We have two more items on our, well, basically three on our nine timed. Do we want to push forward or stop it, use this as a stopping point for lunch break? And that's for the board.
Do lunch.
I don't care.
Yeah, it can go either way, yeah.
So we'll go ahead and break for lunch at this moment, and let's see, what would be a good one to start with? C O, do you have a recommendation on which one we should start with when we come back at 1? Oh, sorry. No, no, my fault. I seen you were talking, and I, which, which one would be a better to, item to come back to, the 7.6 or 7.3?
I would come back to the.
Thank you. Come back with the 7.3.
Okay, so we'll come back at item 7.3 after the lunch break at 1:00 PM, and enjoy your lunch, and thank you. All right. All right, thank you, Sam, and welcome back from the lunch break, everybody. As stated before the break, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a 7.3 consideration of action to rescind by resolution and ordinances the county's prior land use approvals for the Gwinocque Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. A, a resolution vacating setting aside and rescinding land use approvals for the Gwinocque Mixed Use Planning Development Project. B, an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3093. C, an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3094. And D, an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3095. With that, we'll go ahead and, Ms. Grant, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This item comes before you today as a result of a board, board, a Superior Court action as indicated in the memo to you. In 2020, your board approved a number of actions related to the Gwinocque Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. Those actions were subsequently challenged in Superior Court. The court issued a ruling and order on the petitions for writ of mandate, where the court concluded that the county's findings with regard to community evacuation routes was not supported by substantial evidence. The court went on to say, had it not been for that one item, the court would have found in favor of the county. Because of that very limited ruling, the court had issued a writ of mandate and judgments in those consolidated cases that requires that the approvals the county adopted in connection with the certifications for that project be set aside and vacated. So all of those are before you today in the resolution and the ordinances that are listed A through D in the board memo. This is an action that the county will take, and then within the prescribed period of time, will file a return to, to the writ, which will inform the court of the actions that have been taken. Also, just so that you know, the court did order that it would retain jurisdiction over these proceedings, and that's what's happening now until the writ is complied with. And with that, I think that answers most of your questions, but if you should have any other questions, I am happy to answer them or try them.
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Not seeing any. I'll open it up to the public, and I'm looking online, because nobody in the chamber has it now. Do I see any hands? Don't see any hands. Do I see any hands? Don't see any hands raised. And so I'll give it one, two, three, four, five. Bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, pretty straightforward. So I'm gonna move forward here.
Yes, you have before you, as I said, a resolution which the bottom of the memo explains would be offered and
I'm gonna go ahead and offer the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Resolution has been offered.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now there are two actions I need to take? Or is that it?
No, sir, there are actually
Three. More than two?
There are actually three ordinances. Each one will be subject to a motion to waive reading, having it read in title only, and then advancing to the next meeting date.
Can the one and two motions be done together or one at a time?
No.
So yeah, just do one of those together.
There'll be six separate actions then. The ordinances are listed.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution vacating setting aside and rescinding land use approvals for the Guanac's Mixed-Use Plan Development Project?
That's the resolution that was offered.
Motion to waive reading of the ordinance.
You have three. You have three ordinances as well. I apologize. I'm trying to get back on Zoom here. I got knocked out.
Okay.
Here we go.
So do you want it?
There we go. I'm sorry. Now I'm back on. You have a resolution which is which you would offer for passage that will vacate, set aside, and rescind the land use approvals for Guanac Mixed-Use that were either approved by your board by motion or by resolution. And then you have three separate resolutions which are explained in the attached documents which will which your board, I'm sorry, three attached ordinances which your board would adopt ordinances to rescind. And you have ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance 3093, which was 3093 was a sectional district zoning map for Guanac Valley Mixed-Use, which your board approved on July 21, 2020. So your board, as to that particular ordinance, has a resolution rescinding it before you, and that would be first a motion to waive reading of the title, having it read, waive reading of the ordinance, and have it read in title only. That would be first, and then you'll move to advance.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the title is an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3093.
And then a motion to advance to next week.
And I'll make a motion to advance the ordinance to the next regular board meeting, which is the 21st. Do we have a time?
Doesn't have to have
Don't need a time?
No.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next ordinance to be rescinded is number 3094. In when that ordinance was adopted, it was a sectional zoning map, number 3.7B1402, again for Guanac Valley Mixed-Use Plan Development. The ordinance before you is an ordinance to rescind, ordinance number 3094, accomplished by the same two actions, a motion to waive reading and then a motion to advance.
So I make a motion to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only?
Second?
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then that one is an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3094.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to advance the ordinance to to the next regular board meeting, which is June 21st.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the final ordinance that your board adopted was allowed two readings. So its final adoption was actually on August 4, 2020. And that was ordinance 3095. Your approval of that ordinance established regulations and department standards for, again, the Guanac Valley Zoning District for the Guanac Valley Mixed-Use Plan Development Project. By the ordinance that is before you, you would rescind ordinance number 3095 by the two motions that have previously been made, one to waive reading, the second to advance.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then that one's an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance Number 3095.
Mr. Chair, I move to motion to advance the ordinance to the next regular board meeting of June 21st?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right. And so it looks like we are on our 7.6. Are we ready to go to that? Do we need any other staff in the room or are they gonna?
We need to move Mary Darby from attendees.
Yes.
So 7.6? Okay, so I'll read that item off. Consideration of Excel agreement extension and TruePoint permitting software, and B, consideration of roadmap task force data tracker software system. With that, I will wait. Mary Darby?
Is it possible to move Mary Darby from attendee to panelist?
Ms. Darby has has been offered promotion to panelist and will need to accept. I think she just did.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matthew. All right, Director Darby, the floor is yours when you're when you're ready. Do you think she needs time? Maybe we can do the calendars or? Oh, there she goes. All right. We see you now. You're still on mute, Director Darby? Yep, there you go. How about now? Oh, it's still, for some reason, not coming through.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we hear you. Excellent.
Sorry. Sorry about the confusion. Thank you for the opportunity to present the consideration of the ACELA agreement. Good afternoon, everyone. This is via a two-part presentation. Part one would be for a discussion and consideration for ACELA agreement for a one-time extension and for consideration of a TruePoint permitting software. And also, part B, which be what would be presented by Supervisor Sabatier on a roadmap task force data tracking software system. I'm going to briefly share my screen on where we are with the ACELA contract. We're at the point now where our ACELA contract agreement will expire July 30th, 2000, I'm sorry, July 31st, 2022. And this is a presentation to request an extension for one year. Just a second, please. Hey, Miles, I'm having some difficulty with sharing my screen. Okay, I think that's it. Okay, can you see my screen now?
No.
No. Well, I'll go ahead and I'll continue while I'm working on the sharing of the screen. Oh, I see it. Right here.
Which one?
Here, I see it. Thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're up for contract expiration July 31st, 2022. And because CDD Department is actually still reviewing the effectiveness of ACELA, I am requesting that we extend the contract only for a one-year basis. It allows staff additional time to work with the organization to come up with a better solution for ACELA. So in 2016, I'd like to provide a little background. In 2016, ACELA was approved by the board to allow for users or for 10-user licenses. In 2021, the board approved 23 licenses. So we extended 13 licenses. And currently, because of filling vacant positions in CDD, we would require another additional eight user licenses to support the staff members that we have totally in CDD right now. So we're requesting an update or an extension So to break down a little bit of how these licenses are being used for our permit tracking, so Building Division requires 15 licenses. And right now, we have one vacant position in our Building Division. Code Enforcement Division currently has, utilizes six licenses, and there's one code officer position vacant in the Code Division. Planning Division has 10 licenses currently that we're using. However, we have five vacant positions. I wanted to correct, in the memo, it states that we are requesting a total purchase of 42 licenses. But I would like to, the 42 licenses is currently would include vacant positions that we have, which are seven in our department, and four unfunded positions. So currently, our department would only need a total of 31 licenses. So our memo would need to be updated, as well as our contract amount in which we're requesting renewal. One license, ACELA license per user, per user costs approximately $2,347. Currently, we have been operating off in 23 licenses to renew 23 licenses. It would be $53,995. And to include eight additional licenses with the total licenses that we're operating with already, for 33 licenses, it would cost approximately $72,776, which is a difference of $25,823 from the memo amount requesting $98,600. We're also requesting, in addition to renewing licenses for 33 licenses, we're requesting TruePoint consulting services to help with the maintenance and services for ACELA. That would include services required for planning and building. TruePoint costs $150 per hour. We're requesting $15,000 to be added to the ACELA renewal costs. That would give CDD 100 hours of maintenance services. And these services would include writing script and mechanisms for staff entering their staff service hours, and also setting up and printing generated invoices for projects. In addition, it would assist with the planning workflow for in ACELA for planners to adequately complete their assignments. To fund this requested amount, in the recommended budget, Planning Division has allotted $60,000 for permitting software, and Building has allotted $40,000 for permitting software. So that would support the cost of $72,776.84, including the $15,000 for TruePoint. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. So we, CDD has been experiencing challenges with using our ACELA program. And so the initial renewal came for a request for three to five years extension. But I am recommending that we extend only for one year, so we won't have downtime with staff assignments continually being processed. And only extending for one year to allow staff additional time to review other permitting softwares. And that's kind of like, that ends my part A presentation. Part B presentation comes in with a proposed data tracker software that will assist us with the roadmap task force while we're working on bringing ACELA up to speed, that this tracker software will support the roadmap task task force, as well as the Code Division, Enforcement Division, to move forward. And at this time, I will allow
Director Darby?
Supervisor Sabatier to move forward if you don't have any questions.
We'll go ahead and address the first, and then we'll move right on to that one after we finish that. So Supervisor Sabatier, Ms. Grant, did you have something?
My only question is that the the document that is attached will have to be amended, I'm assuming, to accommodate Ms. Darby's request. So there's an attachment that shows
Nineteen.
the additional licenses. And perhaps I'm missing it, but I don't see the $15,000 attached either. So I just a caution to the board that what you approve, if you're going to approve the request, we'll have to amend it to adjust those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With with that, Supervisor Sabatier?
And actually, that was my main question is, are we looking at $72,776.84 plus the $15,000? Or is the $15,000 for the TruePoint a part of the $72,776.84?
No. So we would we would be looking at the $72,776.84 plus the $15,000.
Okay, so we're looking at a total of $87,776.84 at this point?
Yes.
And so I'm wondering, because I know that we've been, we've had ACELA for six years. Can you talk about what's gone on during those past six years? How much has been utilized? And and what the plan is for this specific year that this contract would be extended for?
I can speak specifically about the plan for this specific year. Unfortunately, I don't have the data that you would need for the past six years out without me being here. But the plan for the the first, the next year would be to allow a workflow for planning, the Planning Division in ACELA, to move forward to print invoices for work services provided by for applicants. Also, we would increase our permitting intake process and work with the Building Division to outline the when applicants apply for permits, it would allow them to apply online. And there will be in, I'm sorry, I am, it would allow for the Building Division to receive online applications and to process those applications with invoices as well as for funding. And it would also include the ability to provide citations from the Building Division. So those would be the three. The Building Division would allow citations, online processing, and for planning, it will allow staff to provide invoices for work services. I hope that was clear.
Yeah.
And so you said that you, obviously, the software is meant to help organize and process applications at the planning level. And you said that it would be able to print invoices. And I'm just I'm looking at the planning budget that was just offered, just to see what do we get? Have we invoiced before? And this will be one of the first times that we do invoicing outside of the original cost for starting a project when they approach your window to start a minor use permit or just a zoning permit type of thing? This would be an initiative, too?
This would be the very first time that CDD would be able to process invoices.
Right. That's important. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And keep track of hours.
And keep track.
And track hours, yes.
And basically, my my question is, we're we're only doing an extension for a year, is what you're saying, rather than three?
My recommendation is for a year because we, staff has been researching other types of permitting software that may be more user-friendly and more effective for what we need. And unfortunately, because we're at July 31st, the end of our expiration date, we don't have the information to present right now on other permitting softwares. So our recommendation is to move forward with one year. If we don't move forward with one year, then staff will not be able to utilize ACELA to track any permits at all.
Oh, thank you for that. That was my question.
But we're making that $15,000 investment to make ACELA more effective for us?
Yes.
For one year?
I would, yes.
Is there a savings for doing more than one year?
There is. There is a savings for doing more than one year for a five-year is in the $500,000 range. But that does not include any maintenance work or any or any type of training or anything of such. That's just for the user licenses.
So there's not a savings for the three-year option?
It would be, there would be a savings for a three-year options for the user licenses.
No, but not for the training.
What, how substantial is that savings?
The savings is $300,000 for three years, $500,000 for five years. So the savings is approximately $200,000.
We were making that investment of $15,000 for just one year, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I think if we're going to be putting $15,000 into making Acela work better, maybe we should consider longer than one year.
Are we, so we're actually taking away from, because it says 19, and we're only basically trying to do eight, right, when it comes to the licenses? Because of the positions that weren't filled, I think that was, was that explained?
No, we're doing 31.
So currently, we have 23 licenses, and because of staff increase, we would need additional eight licenses, so that will be a total of 31 licenses.
Okay, and then here it says 19 on the invoice, and that would change back down to eight instead of 19, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so I'm wondering if that amount of, what is it, 11, would be the same amount as the 15, if that makes sense? That might cover, you know, the amount of investment towards that year at least. Because we lack the bodies to fill the subscriptions, maybe that would work out.
With the additional 11 licenses that we, that would be required as we fill additional positions, Acela stated that they could prorate any licenses in which we move forward with.
Are there any other questions?
And I'll say that I don't disagree with Supervisor Pyska, because the cost just for one year is substantial. Granted, I'm sure that there is, I don't see an actual contract here, other than an invoice. What is our exit strategy if we do approve for three years and leave early? Because we decide this is not the software package?
Right, I understand about the exit strategy. We've been looking at permit tracking, and we're looking at the permit tracking software, which other counties are using. We found that it could be more expensive, so we are really trying to work with TruePoint to bring our Acela software up to the level where it needs to be to provide the efficiency and productivity we need.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we need a little bit more time. If there's a way we could possibly table this to the next meeting, I could come back, I can come back with additional information in terms of the three years, the five years, and our exit strategy, if we were to abandon Acela.
Ms. Grant?
Just a suggestion, your board may wish to ensure that you have a copy of the existing Acela agreement as part of your packet, so that you can review those terms as you're considering the item next week.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have basically a consensus to do that for next week?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we have a consensus on that. So we'll, if we can ensure we get what was just stated, presented in the packet next week, we can review that for this renewal. And so, real quick, I'm going to open it up to public input, because it looks like we can move forward with that till next week, but I didn't open it up. So is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on 7.6A? Not hearing anybody, I'll bring it back to the board, and so basically, that item, that portion of this item, and then the agenda will come back next week. However, B, that was read off, consideration of roadmap task force data tracker software system, we'll basically go over that now.
So, as you well know, I'm all about data, and I'm all about being efficient and understanding what can be streamlined in the processes that we use. And I know that there's a lot of, a lot of the organizational stuff happening in the Department of, for Community Development, utilizes Word, utilizes Excel spreadsheets, and in my opinion, data belongs in a database where then you can meaningfully spit out something that helps you be more efficient and more accurate in what you're trying to report out, and also help you move forward with your workload. And so I approached Mary Darby and said, what do you think if I look at creating a program for you that would help your team be more efficient and be able to work more efficiently through the processes, and then eventually also provide data? Because the roadmap task force is a pilot program, in order for us to understand if we want to continue the pilot program and make it a reality, or if we don't, it's going to require appropriate data to help us, guide us in that future decision. And so she said she was interested, so I probably, and Director Darby can correct me, probably used about maybe two hours of her and her staff time overall, just to have conversations of what it is that they would want changed on some of the demos that I provided for them, and so I just wanted to provide you with a demonstration of what it is that I created, because I did not want them to utilize something that I created without the approval of the board, as I felt that was overstepping boundaries. This is just done out of my own work, this is not anything, this is not a, there's no compensation for this, this is something that I've done in the past for many other companies and agencies that I've worked for, and I think would be useful, and if you guys feel it is something that would be useful, then you can say yes, or if you feel it's not useful, you can say no. And so there would be usernames that are typed into it, I'm just going to log in as an admin here for the roadmap task force. As you can see, and I'm sorry if it's a little small for people here, but that's as big as it's going to get, you see all of the notice of violations that have been entered. Those in red mean that we should have gone out and done an inspection, because those are the inspection dates. Those that are not in red at the bottom of here means that there's still time before they can meet that compliance that we're looking for them to have. And then on the side here, you see, because I'm logged in as admin, I can see all of the different officers, I put myself in as an example of an officer, but you could see all the different officers. If you log in as the officer, you would only see your cases and be able to review your cases and update them, and so on and so forth. If you want to add a notice of violation, it's as simple as adding a property, which is all linked right here, and the date of the notice of violation, which, anticipated date, which can be automatically set at 30 days or changed, and then collect the data of the reason we initiated it. Was it a complaint? Was it a collaboration with another department that called you? Or was it self-initiated by something that you saw in the field? Once you have the notice of violation created, you can click here to update it. You can update and reassign it to someone else, change some of the specifics that you already entered, or you can add an inspection of what it is that you saw. The inspection is as simple as just putting in a date and a narrative of what it is that you saw when you went out there. Let me open up the one that would look good to open up. If you update an inspection, you can add pictures here by clicking on the pencil, you can add/remove pictures based on what pictures you took that are now put on your hard drive, and you're able to just go through the pictures. And yes, I just used my Yosemite pictures from vacation just for that, but you can update the pictures, you can update the narrative, you can even reassign the inspection if it was done by someone else and it was wrongfully entered, stuff like that. And so again, you enter all of your inspection, keeps track of all your inspections, you can delete them, update them, when you delete, it saves it in the database, it just doesn't show up, so it doesn't have a convoluted look on what it is that you're looking at. You can move on to properties, it gives you the automatic information about the properties. Has it been auctioned, is it tax defaulted, what's the priority level? If you have history on this property, it will show you all the notice of violations historically, so this one has another 519 notice of violation, the one we're looking at is from April 1st, and so you can actually select it and then automatically jump into that notice of violation, so that, again, it's easy to get the history of what you're looking at. Here in the Individuals tab, you can add individuals that are related to it, that way you can keep track of who it is that you need to contact, or who you've been in contact with. It's easy to add individuals, just gives the basic information, as well as email and phone number that is available to you. And again, if you want to update an individual, you just update it, and all that information can be updated. Same deal, and then you could look at the inactive, and I'll, I'll try not to get into the weeds on that. Notice of violations, you could always add violations, the violation types, building code, and zoning, and so on, and once you choose a building type, then you have the whole list of what codes are available, based on what I was, what they submitted to me as far as the codes that they use on a daily basis for creating code violations. And so then you have them all listed here, you can set them up so that once they pass the deadline, you can set them up so that fines are starting to accumulate, and you can also update the violations as well, just like everything else. Tasks, we see this all the time when there's an assessment hearing, where there's a matrix of, I spent this much time traveling, I spent this much time corresponding, all of this can be entered here, again, you can add, you can update, you can delete to make sure that it's nice and clean, and it keeps track of everything. This right here can provide a report, so that if we're not, if we're seeing on average that our code enforcement officers look like they're working four hours a day, to me, it doesn't mean that they're only working four hours a day, it just means we're not actually, we're not creating an invoice for the work we're actually doing for the work that is being asked to be done, and we should be making sure to make people pay for the work that we have to do in order to do the cleanups that we have. And then in the long run, once you have all that information, you can go to Reports, and instead of people typing it up right now, which is all very manual, you just click here for the courtesy letter, and it all takes that information that is already inside the database and creates it for you, so that it looks exactly verbatim like what the actual courtesy letter looks like currently, that way at a click of a button, rather than having to manually enter it. Same thing with a notice of violation, just enters everything for you, case number, site address, property owner, mailing address, everything that's in the database automatically creates a template, basically, a template notice of violation that you, that gets filled out, you can print it out, and then you can go ahead and submit that or post it on the property, and then once you get to Admin Citations, you can go ahead and see fines per violation, all the way to the point of number of fines, number of days, and the total amount of fines that they'll be doing. Again, we've seen some mathematical formula issues in the past, this solves everything in the fact that the data's entered, the data can't be changed, and so the accuracy of the reports is as pin-perfect as you can get it. And so the idea was to help provide efficiencies in getting these things done, to try and make sure that our code enforcement officers are out in the field where they're able to accomplish these things, without doing as much of the bureaucratic work and the office work that's needed for some of these things to happen. I have had a conversation with Director French, that this can easily be placed on the network, and that this can be reached via VPN from a laptop that's capable of accessing the internet, so that they can do all of this data entry out in the field, rather than doing the data entry out in the office and having to come back. So this would provide, again, another level of efficiency to get all of the data entered fresh while you're still there at the property, or just when it's most convenient, rather than waiting to having to go back to the office. So that's kind of the front end for what a user would see. What I wanted to do is make sure that this is not something where they would have to contact me and say, hey, we need to make some changes. So I have the settings here, where again, as a manager, you can look at some of the reports, but everything that I created can then be uncreated or created here as well. If you want to add reasons as to why we have a case here, self-initiated complaint collaboration, you can deactivate any of these, and you can create brand-new ones, or edit what's there, so that it gets created on their own. If you want priority areas, right now we have commercial, highway, public, residential, you can take away, or you can add all that you want. Relationships with the individuals that you meet there, you can create more relationships or get rid of them. Violation types, if we create a new, for example, cannabis is not on there, if we want a violation type that's cannabis, they don't have to ask for the developer to create something, they can just create it right there on their own. Same thing with the violation codes, and the tasks that are already created, delete or add, and make that automatically populate for when the user is creating things, it's automatic. More on the backend, you can create new users, you can reset their passwords, you can edit the users, same with the positions, whether they're an admin, an officer, supervisor, or tech, and I'm going to skip properties, because I'm still working to try and make this, if it is approved, to be connected directly to our Megabyte software, so that it has all the current information from there, and again, spoke with Director French, and that can easily be done and accomplished. And then our rates, we were doing an hourly rate of $82.96 before, as of July 1st, it's not really 100, I just put that in there, but it's a new rate that we just approved, and this is easily updatable, so that it can be changed. If you change this date back to 5-1, this automatically changes it to 4-30, and so on and so forth, so you can never create a situation where it locks up the system, everything has been kind of looked at and made solid, so that there will be no hiccups as things move forward. This was, again, created with the anticipation to help and create efficiencies. I know that in speaking with Director Darby, that there's been some issues in utilizing the Acela software, and right now the Acela software is being focused on planning and building, which leaves code enforcement without a robust software to be able to collect data and make it meaningful in the sense of making their job more efficient and providing data back to the board of supervisors. In my vision, this could easily be flexible to become a county-wide software, where it's not just a roadmap task force, and to the point where it can also be accessible from individual supervisors, so you can just click what's going on in District 1, and what's going on in District 2, and see all of the active cases that are going on. This can also be shared with our Sheriff's Department, we were talking about this with the sheriff. In our meeting, one of our code enforcement officers received a call from a sheriff deputy saying, hey, I'm at this property, can you tell me what's going on? This can easily be accessible, again, from any department, and can be done, so if we choose to do that. So that's what I've created, to try and see if we can help the department with becoming more efficient and accurate in the work that they do. And again, happy to get a yes and move forward and keep working with staff to implement this, or definitely willing to get a no and understand if that is the case as well. And that is my presentation for you today.
All right, thank you for that. I do have a quick question, and I think you mentioned it in the meeting with the sheriff. So like, example, when you mentioned how you can take off some items to use in that one, I'm not sure exactly which area it was, but you said you can remove a subject or something like that, it wouldn't affect previous reports?
No, nothing gets deleted from the database, it's either deactivated or activated, and there's even a checkbox for deleted, just to show that this was meant to be a cleanup. But if you delete something from the database, you have the ability to mess up the actual structure of the database, where there's errors that pop up, because it can't find old information. So the idea is just, what shows up on your screen, and can you find it in a different way, and how is it going to affect the reporting system in the long run? And so by having those checkboxes, it takes care of that, and the data is never deleted, it's always there.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska?
And do they have the hardware to take it out in the field?
So I know that in the budget that we approved today, there is access for, I believe, every employee, based on what Director French told me, and as far as laptops, I believe that some code enforcement have laptops, I don't know that all of them have laptops, but again, this can be used at the office, on their computer, or on the laptops if it's available to them. And access is not a power-hungry type of software that would require any larger type of computer to be able to handle it.
But it's optimized for laptop, or tablets? Do they have tablets?
I don't believe they have tablets.
Okay.
Director Darby? No, we're not hearing you.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, no, we don't have, we have iPads, we don't have tablets, and we do not have access currently to laptops, computers.
Could access be applied to iPads?
They do have a Microsoft Access app, and I'd have to just test it to make sure it works for that, and function with that.
Because I know I have an iPad, I'm able to apply Microsoft to it, but there has to be a package or something that's downloaded, I think. Would have to look at that through IT, but. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? No? I'll bring it back to the board for action discussion.
And today, just looking for direction, if the board says, quit it, that's not something we want to look into, or keep working with staff, and when it's ready to be finalized, bring it back to the board for final approval. I didn't want to, like I said, took about two hours of Marcus Beltramo and Director Darby's time to discuss this project, and don't want to do any more without the approval from the board.
Don't have any questions, but I'm fine with moving forward with it, you know, obviously, something, we've been looking for efficiencies, and had to be built internally, good job, Bruno, so yeah, look to see you come back to us for sure. good job, Bruno, so yeah, look to see you come back to us for sure.
Then I will keep working with Director French and Director Darby to make sure that we have something ready for you guys as soon as possible.
So can you develop like an Exela project too, so we don't have to keep paying them?
It basically is like a mini Exela, but as far as the planning department goes, that probably is a whole lot more robust than anything that I can create on my own at this moment.
I bet you if you put your mind to it, you could do it. You want to have to have it.
Thanks for the confidence.
I think too, that the roadmap task force situation, because it's a pilot anyhow, this gives the opportunity for it to get, you know, it, it showcase, and then if there's any types of things that need to be adjusted, which I think you, you've been doing that a lot already as it is, they can, you know, they, they'll be able to be adjusted for further development in the future, but I think this is, I mean, I've been watching at the meetings that we've had with Roadmap Task Force, and I, I think this will help, so I, I agree. I'd like, like it to move forward with it.
Appreciate it. And that's it?
All right. I think.
Kind of consensus.
Yeah, right. So with the, with that, we can consider this item finished, right? All right. So the last thing is, is this the last thing or is it the calendars?
Yep, calendars.
Okay, just making sure.
Thank you, Director Darby.
Yes, thank you, Director Darby, appreciate your, your time and your report. All right. Calendars, I'll just go ahead and start. Commonly I have someone else do it, but I'll do it, I'll go, I'm ready. So we got today, of course, finishing this meeting, I'll be traveling to Nevada County for RCRC where we'll be having a meeting tomorrow, the Golden, Golden State Natural Resources is first, and then, and that's tomorrow, and I'll also be doing a gender review with Susan via Zoom, and then I'll be attending the Worth meeting via Zoom as well at five-thirty in the evening, so, so that, that'll be tomorrow. And then Thursday, RCRC board meeting in the morning, and then I also have the 1:00 PM IT Design Discovery meeting I'll be attending via Zoom. Friday, I have a pre-meeting for next week's Blue Ribbon Committee meeting this Friday, so I'll be meeting with the folks from UC Davis and some of the Blue Ribbon Committee as it is to talk about the hypo limnetic oxygenation proposal. And then following that, I haven't got a time yet, but the, the folks that are doing a story on the Molokluuk, which is the area that was encumbered into the various Snow Mountain Reserve or National Monument, that's what the name is for that area for Walker Ridge, basically, so that's going to, they wanted to ask some questions about that, so I'm going to have a discussion with them. Back here Monday on the twentieth for CAO meeting, and then, yeah, back here for the meeting on Tuesday. Let's see. Vice Chair Scott?
I have a pretty blank calendar, tomorrow, gender review at eight-thirty, I have social workers in the afternoon attending the Blue Zones Walk, five-thirty at Lakeport, taking a couple days off to deal with some family issues. Saturday, I'll be attending Pastor Randy's memorial, and then Monday, just getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, finish up the board meeting today, just reporting that we had our risk reduction authority meeting yesterday, so that went well. We also had our C-MAT reporting committee meeting as we move forward, large conversations obviously on CWPP rollout and how we're moving forward in that way, so we're continuing those conversations, we'll continue to have those meetings on a monthly basis. We did move up our meeting because of the holiday next week, so that's why we had it on the thirteenth, not the third Monday, everybody participated it really well. So on Wednesday, I have a couple meetings in, down in my district, a couple meetings with constituents, one on a project, another one on road issue, so we'll be trying to get those taken care of. On Thursday, see there is one, Jessica, for the Lake County, the GS paddle, so that's at ten AM, so we'll be in that meeting, and then, or nine to ten is what I have, do I have it, nine to ten?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And then Friday, kind of have conflicting things, we have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay, I was planning on attending in person, but I think I'm going to do Zoom now, so I've taken care of that information, so, but I'm doing that on Zoom, and then, oh, Jessica, and then obviously this weekend, starting Saturday, Friday night is the farmer's market, and then Saturday and Sunday, Saturday is Middletown Day, Sunday is Father's Day. And I was always, so June thirteenth is nineteenth, is the office open Monday now?
Should be a federal holiday, I believe.
Should be a federal, are we closed or not? That's a question. We're open.
We haven't adopted it, the MOUs.
Didn't we take it off last year?
I just had a question on that because it came up with Juneteenth, so I was a little confused on the calendar, I was.
I thought we did take it off last year, didn't we?
That's what I, I was looking to do a proclamation for next weekend, I was, I was thinking about that myself.
No, we're, I, I just don't know if we've, we've cleared it with the MOUs for the holiday with staff.
There's Pam.
Okay, Pam came on, sorry. Her ears were burning.
That's okay. No, we did not adopt that as a holiday. We should, when we were negotiating the MOUs, we left it at the economic offers and the addition to benefits, and so we, we have not adopted that as of yet.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification, I just wanted to say that, so, all right, so, and then back here on Tuesday, so.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Simon, Supervisor Sabatier?
You almost canceled our meeting on Tuesday.
I wasn't trying to cancel the meeting, but obviously that's a very important.
It's usually what happens, yeah.
Federal holiday, so.
Yeah, no, it, it's strange, I could have sworn we did close down last year.
I think we did close down.
Was that because that was an executive order to make sure that everybody started to see that as a holiday? I, I know that it just changed federally, and so I'm wondering if there was an executive order or something that came down.
But I think we did close down.
Yeah, my memory tells me so, but that's not always correct. Let's see here, tomorrow, meeting with CC4C, need to try and clarify some of the cameras that they've been looking for, and I don't think I'll make it there, but to the County of Lake Brown Bag Luncheon for homeownership, just to listen in, starting Thursday with Judges Breakfast, and I have an IFT meeting for inter-facility transfers, and then a, goodness gracious, EMCC, I believe it is, the LEMSA Emergency Committee, I wish I knew exactly, Emergency Medical County Committee or something like that. We'll continue with that. Then doing the Design Discovery, thank you for the invitation to be with Chair Crandall to review how we're going to be moving forward on the website. And then finishing that evening off with City Council, Clear Lake City Council meeting. On Friday, I'm meeting with Adventist Health, and then meeting with, I'm going to try to make it, I was a part of a, I believe you were a part of this last year, Supervisor Scott, the challenge, the one-hundred-day challenge?
At the beginning.
Okay. So I was invited to have a conversation with the hundred-day challenge, they tried to change up who it is that they're talking to, and they pointed me in the direction of, because of some of the comments I made, to link up with the Lake County Housing Navigator meeting. I don't know if anyone else goes to that, just kind of wanted to check in. So wanted to listen in to see how, how that's going, it's all based on how to get those who are experiencing homelessness to find housing, both of those conversations, the hundred-day challenge and that one. That is all that I have for that. Here's another one that I. Not sure what that is, I'm just not even going to say anything. And then I am meeting again with Adventist as well on the following Monday, preparing for our Tuesday meeting, meeting with our CAO, and that is all that I have. I do want to let the supervisors know that I will be bringing a agenda item, there is conversations happening at PEG TV that relates to pretty much everyone on this board except for me, because it has to deal with the municipal advisory committees, and so once we finalize and satisfy the board on what we want to provide back to the board, I will be coming back to you with that. At one point, I will be speaking with Ms. Grant to figure out how best to get, and maybe just by bringing it to the board would be the best way, I was going to say to comment to PEG Board members, just not me, or else that means that I'm hearing it from multiple supervisors, but bringing it back to the board will actually solve that, so never mind. But that is something that we are working on, just wanted to prepare you for that. I'm excited about the idea, and we'll see if you guys like the idea too, so, just something that's coming up.
Supervisor Pyska?
I have a couple things to report. Last weekend, the, in, with, in coordination with CAL FIRE, South Lake Fire, Claberry Council, and their Forest Stewardship Group, we had the first weekend drop-off days for the air curtain burner, which were pretty successful, several tons of trees and logs and brush were dropped off, and that was a community project, it was twenty-five dollars for a pickup and fifty dollars for a trailer, which is a really great deal for dropping stuff off and not having to haul it off the mountain. So that's awesome, and I want to thank everybody that has been working for months and months to get that going. Eventually, someday soon, the air curtain burner will get fired up, and all that vegetation will be burned, and we're looking forward to more drop-off days in the future. And yesterday, there was the flat fire on Harrington Flat, which was right in pretty much the epicenter of our, our tree mortality area, the trees have been dying rapidly in the Harrington Flat area for the past couple of years, so that was a really scary incident, but because there were already so many resources in the air for the other incidents that were happening around Lake County, they were able to get on that really quickly. But just watching that smoke come in the middle of a bunch of dead trees was pretty awful, and so I just want to remind everybody that fire season is definitely here. There was a town hall that Senator McGuire hosted last week for all of the North Coast region, and I did have several conversations with a few of his staff members after that meeting, because I don't, did anybody else watch it here? So the innovation and the investment that's happening by the state to help support communities with wildfire mitigation is, you know, we're thrilled that this is all happening. But the strategy that was outlined in the town hall is a little bit problematic for counties like ours, because we don't have the capacity in place that other larger counties do to access those grants and funds. So my conversations with staffers, just what's happening on the ground needs to be understood at the state level so that we can really be a part of that strategy and making sure that we're able to access those resources, so I think that conversation is going to be developing. And it's just important that they hear our feedback, and we can work together on a strategy that, that really will benefit all of us. Then at our C-MAT Committee from the RRA, yesterday, we are just continuing to work on our Fire Safe Lake Workshops, which are on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and that is bringing all of our stakeholders together to really work to develop a countywide Fire Safe Council, which was one of the, the strategies that was suggested in the town hall, just contact your Fire Safe Council and they'll help you write grants, and well, we don't have a Fire Safe Council, so that's problematic. But I do want to demonstrate to our state partners that we're on this and we're working really, really hard, but, you know, they need to kind of understand where we are today. Then next week, we're going to have the Girl Scouts in here in the morning, it's going to be a big day for them, so I'm hoping that everyone can come a little bit early, and maybe they'll sit with us and learn what we do and help us start the meeting off, and then they're going to take a tour of the courthouse when things get boring here. So they're working on their democracy badge, and we can honor them.
After the puppies leave.
Yeah, it'll be sort of after the puppies.
We're all on the same.
So I just want to let you all know that the, the girls will be here, the scouts, and it'd be great if you came a little early and can just talk about your roles and responsibilities, and they can learn a little bit more about local government. Okay, so that is today, maybe I'll get to make the Cobb Farmers Market, fingers crossed.
Just ruin it for yourself.
I know, I know. Tomorrow is the Regional SEQA Training with CAL FIRE, which I am likely not going to be able to attend, but I think that we do have some of our local people that are going to be participating in that. I do have a meeting with a student from George Washington University who is studying wildfire and communities, so he's going to be coming up to Cobb, and we're going to take a tour and have that interview. In the evening is the Cobb Alert Radio Check-In, which happens year-round, but just encouraging everybody to be prepared in every way possible, starting now. There's the Best Fitz Grant Meeting at nine, which I don't think I'll be able to attend. We are having a virtual meeting with Tuckman Geospatial, that's a, a group that, company that was at the Wildfire and Forest Resiliency Task Force Meeting in Santa Rosa in early May, and they do vegetation and fuels mapping, so we're going to have that meeting with them. And Fire Safe Council Meeting at ten-thirty, the Veterans Mobile Stand Down is going to be in Kelseyville, the Kelseyville Street Dance is happening Thursday evening, but it's also the Claberry Council, so I'll be there instead, but I wish I could be at the Street Dance. Friday is the Workforce Alliance Meeting that Supervisor Simon is going to go to so that I can attend our Tree Mortality Task Force Meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, my computer's frozen. Okay, and then, didn't our Home Hardening Meeting get canceled? Okay, still on my calendar. Saturday, Middletown Days Parade, have lovely weather, sure. Sunday, Peace and Plinny is having their five-year celebration, and I have my tickets for Bacon Fest in Kelseyville. Monday, I, it's Juneteenth, and I just, I have my meeting with CAO Parker, I think that's it. And then back here Tuesday.
All right. Thank you for that, and with that, we'll go ahead and move to closed session, I'll read off those items. Eight-point-one, Public Employee Evaluation Title, Air Pollution Control Officer. Number two, eight-point-two, Public Employee Evaluation Agricultural Commissioner. Eight-point-three, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Health Officer. Eight-point-four, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, six-point-nine D-1, Nichols versus County of Lake et al. With that, we'll go into closed session, thank you everyone for, for tuning in with us.
Action was taken on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in regard to the closed session item eight-point-four, Nichols versus the County of Lake et al. The following motion was made and approved by a five-zero vote of the board supervisors. In motion to approve settlement in the matter of Nichols versus County of Lake et al. in the amount of five-hundred thousand dollars, the county will accept Ms. Nichols' resignation in lieu of prior action. Will ensure training in the discrimination harassment complaint process, continue its ongoing process of implementing cultural awareness training, and will pay the cost of mediation. The action was announced in open session during the regularly scheduled meeting of the board supervisors immediately following closed session. However, the Zoom link was not operating at the time, therefore, on this date, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the board is issuing this addendum to the Zoom record to ensure the public is aware of the action taken. Thank you very much.